Even when I wrote The Bluest Eye...
The first book.
Mm-hmm. I was really writing a book I wanted to read. I mean, I didn't know. I hadn't seen a book in which black girls were center stage. They were usually, I don't know, somebody's joke on the periphery somewhere.
You were writing it for yourself, not for any audience.
Uh-uh.
Not for African-Americans, not for anybody, for yourself.
No, 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 for me. I wanted to read it. I wanted to read a book that had no codes, no little notes explaining things to white people, no little clues, just something that I already knew and what was more provocative about it. And I had a major, major question in my mind at that time, which was, how does a child learn self-loathing for racial purposes? Where does it come from? Who enables it? How is it infectious? And then what might be the consequences?
And what were the answers?
You learn it from the society at large.
Institutions.
Institutions, but more importantly than that, at a certain time, the self-loathing can be reinforced by one's own family, one's own community. You know, the concept of what is ugly can just be reinforced by people next door. I remember girls who weren't blond, who longed for that and felt terrible about themselves. I mean, all this physical beauty business is painful if you have to do what you do now, which is cut yourself up in little bits.
Most of us have no idea of the pain it causes people because the society and the culture and the media and the magazines and the television and all the commercials bombard them with what it is to be attractive. And they define attractiveness in our culture and they find what's good and what's bad. So that all of a sudden, if you don't look like that, you say, "I don't like myself." And how do I go change myself?
It's death. It's interior death. You never have an opportunity to develop what's really valuable, which is grace, balance, health, virtue, all those good things that each of us can be. But now, if you're gonna worry, worry, worry about hair and skin color, how tall you are and how short... I mean, I don't mean that self-esteem is not bound up in some of these things, but I'm talking about obsessive...
Self-esteem is bound up in everything. Just give me your take on Rodney King and Los Angeles and all of that experience.
The most remarkable thing to me about Rodney King and what happened afterwards was people kept saying, "Oh, this terrible explosion, oh, the riots, oh, this is awful and could've been avoided," or "What is it about?" What struck me most about the people who were burning down shops and stealing was how long they waited, the restraint, not the spontaneity, the restraint. You realize the moment to be anarchic was when we saw those tapes, when we first saw those tapes.
They waited for justice.
They waited. How long was that? Nine months, a year? They waited for justice, almost a year, and it didn't come. No one talks about the fact that no one ran out into the streets as I wanted to. I was sitting in there with my son. It was like a ballet. It was unbelievable. And I think everybody felt that way. And no one, they didn't do a thing. They waited. That's amazing. That's amazing to me.
But what do you say to those of the same color who were damaged by that final explosion of rage?
Oh, well, that breaks my heart. I'm heartbroken about the crime that's inward, that turns inward within the neighborhood. There's an element of self-destruction that is there for all sorts of reasons, some of which are the ones we mentioned in The Bluest Eye, which is just self-loathing, some is just cul-de-sacs, some is just a world in which you cannot even be a man, excuse me, you can't be an adult without money. You know, when I grew up, you could be a grown-up and poor. I mean, you could, I don't know, build a house or go hunting or...
You made a point somewhere where the choices are awful.
They are awful. So they have to have things in order to have respect, so they steal things...
To get things.
Right. Or, you know, because they don't have things. So that, that's heartbreaking. If you can only be tall because somebody's on their knees, then you have a serious problem. And my feeling is, white people have a very, very serious problem. And they should start thinking about what they can do about it. Take me out of it.
Context of White Supremacy. Justice, Gus T. Renegade, in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. I'm just pressing the button. We will hop right into the program, skipping no beat. I hope, if anything, I've realized often, I think, my phrase that I say is, "Knowledge is demonstrated," right? I don't really wanna hear people talking about, "Oh, I'm, you know, the smartest person in the world, and I know this, I'm the best stockbroker in the world, I build the best houses in the world, I build the best spaceships in the world," you know? All that is demonstrated. If you build the best spaceships, let's be on Pluto in the next five minutes. You're the best basketball player, let's get the ball and hit the courts ASAP. Knowledge is demonstrated. And I think, for me, sometimes, the counter racist code that I have, I don't state it explicitly, it's just demonstrated. I have said consistently, you have to expect white people to be trifling, tacky, terroristic, and a long time ago, in a galaxy still dominated by racism, white supremacy, I told Back of the Bus, victim of racism, I told Back of the Bus when we started the COWS radio program in 2007, before most of you all were even aware of Gus or this program, that if we were effective, most likely, white people would terminate the program. And I said, "That should be part of the gauge. If what we're doing is really, you know, working against what racist man, racist woman, racist child have in store for melanin dominant people all across the planet, then they're gonna turn the program off." That has happened not once, not twice, but thrice. I think for many of the folks tuning into the old page at Talk Shoe, the white people at Talk Shoe disabled the content and they did not give an explanation. They just said, "You're in violation of the terms of service." No further explanation. They even told me about a year ago that you, if you are the host of a program at Talk Shoe, you are responsible for any comments on the page, meaning that if people leave any sort of profane comments on your page, you are responsible for deleting them. So they were even last year saying, "That was my fault," or "I was responsible for the racist terrorists who were just spamming the page regularly, writing all sorts of filthy things, racist things on the page." Anywho, that is to be expected. We have a new page at Talk Shoe. We're also simulcasting this program on the Black Talk Radio Network. In fact, this program is also even streaming live on my blog, so you can tune in to racism-noits.blogspot.com, and you can listen live there as well. So just have to expect that sort of thing, particularly if what you're doing is working against white people, you just gotta expect opposition. And I think the evidence shows that. And I will remind folks, now, they can gripe and complain about Gus T. Renegade, our efforts here at the COWS, there is more than one program on Talk Shoe's network that has a swastika as the avatar for the page, and they have no problem putting that on the front page. When you log into Talk Shoe, they have no problem having that out front as one of the programs that you can access as a community call. I will end there so that we have ample time for The Bluest Eye, Toni Morrison. The number to dial is 760-569-7676, and the code is 564943. Press *6 if you have questions, press *8 if you're on the Talk Shoe line if you have questions. I'll give out the number a few more times as we roll, but I wholeheartedly agree with Toni Morrison, white people have serious problems. Now, it's not just me saying it. I'm in total agreement with Toni Morrison. Anywho, we will get ready for the final segment of our study session on The Bluest Eye, one of my favorite books, hands down. I'll give out some of the books that we have as an option for our next set of book study sessions coming up, but I'll do that later in the program. Just some things that we kinda wanna keep in mind. I think some of the major themes have been black males and them functioning as terrorists towards other black people in the book. I think that's been a major theme. I think religion, that has also been a major theme, being a Maginot Line, Maginot Line, excuse me, one of our terms from the book, impressive but ineffective defense. And just the different ways that religion comes in and how that has been able to pacify some of the black characters in the book, or not, major themes. And also, the children just being the most vulnerable element, adults not being able to protect them, adults terrorizing them in some instances, just really showing what Mr. Fuller says, that black people are not able to be fathers, not able to be mothers, not able to be wives, not able to be husbands. I think all of that has been duly evidenced in the book thus far. At any rate, we will proceed. This is the final installment of Toni Morrison's The Bluest Eye. We'll do, as we have been doing, first segment, we'll stop, questions, comments, looking forward to hearing dialogue, and then, once that segment ends, we will move to the second segment. Definitely looking forward to hearing feedback, so take notes, have a pen and pad at hand so you can take notes and have your ideas written down to participate in the discussion. This would be Toni Morrison's The Bluest Eye, first segment.
The Bluest Eye, cassette five. Young Elihu was saved from visible shattering by the steady hand of his father, who reminded him of the family's reputation and Velma's questionable one. He then pursued his studies with more vigor than before and decided at last to enter the ministry. When he was advised that he had no avocation, he left the island, came to America to study the then budding field of psychiatry. But the subject required too much truth, too many confrontations, and offered too little support for failing ego. He drifted into sociology, then physical therapy. This diverse education continued for six years, when his father refused to support him any longer until he found himself. Elihu, not knowing where to look, was thrown back on his own devices and found himself quite unable to earn money. He began to sink into a rapidly fraying gentility, punctuated with a few of the white collar occupations available to black people, regardless of their noble bloodlines in America: desk clerk at a colored hotel in Chicago, insurance agent, traveling salesman for a cosmetics firm catering to blacks. He finally settled in Lorain, Ohio, in 1931, palming himself off as a minister and inspiring awe with the way he spoke English. The women of the town early discovered his celibacy, and not being able to comprehend his rejection of them, decided that he was supernatural rather than unnatural. Once he understood their decision, he quickly followed through, accepting the name Soaphead Church and the role they had given him. He rented a kind of back-room apartment from a deeply religious old lady named Bertha Reese. She was clean, quiet, and very close to total deafness. The lodgings were ideal in every way but one. Bertha Reese had an old dog, Bob, who although as deaf and quiet as she, was not as clean. He slept most of his days away on the back porch, which was Elihu's entrance. The dog was too old to be of any use, and Bertha Reese had no strength or presence of mind to care for him properly. She fed him and watered him, left him alone. The dog was mangy. His exhausted eyes ran with a sea-green matter around which gnats and flies clustered. Soaphead was revolted by Bob and wished he would hurry up and die. He regarded this wish for the dog's death as humane, for he could not bear, he told himself, to see anything suffer. It didn't occur to him that he was really concerned about his own suffering, since the dog had adjusted himself to frailty and old age. Soaphead, finally determined to put an end to the animal's misery, and bought some poison with which to do it. Only the horror of having to go near him had prevented Soaphead from completing his mission. He waited for rage or blinding revulsion to spur him. Living there among his worn things, rising early every morning from dreamless sleeps, he counseled those who sought his advice. His business was dread. People came to him in dread, whispered in dread, wept and pleaded in dread, and dread was what he counseled. Singly, they found their way to his door, wrapped each in a shroud stitched with anger, yearning, pride, vengeance, loneliness, misery, defeat, and hunger. They asked for the simplest of things, love, health, and money. "Make him love me. Tell me what this dream means. Help me get rid of this woman. Make my mother give me back my clothes. Stop my left hand from shaking. Keep my baby's ghost off the stove. Break so-and-so's fix." To all these requests, he addressed himself. His practice was to do what he was bid, not to suggest to a party that perhaps the request was unfair, mean, or hopeless. With only occasional and increasingly rare encounters with the little girls he could persuade to be entertained by him, he lived rather peaceably among his things, admitting to no regrets. He was aware, of course, that something was awry in his life, and all lives, but put the problem where it belonged, at the foot of the originator of life. He believed that since decay, vice, filth, and disorder were pervasive, they must be in the nature of things. Evil existed because God had created it. He, God, had made a sloven and unforgivable error in judgment, designing an imperfect universe. Theologians justified the presence of corruption as a means by which men strove, were tested and triumphed, a triumph of cosmic neatness. But this neatness, the neatness of Dante, was in the orderly sectioning and segregating of all levels of evil and decay. In the world, it was not so. The most exquisite-looking ladies sat on toilets, and the most dreadful-looking had pure and holy yearnings. God had done a poor job, and Soaphead suspected that he himself could've done better. It was, in fact, a pity that the maker had not sought his counsel. Soaphead was reflecting once again on these thoughts one late hot afternoon, when he heard a tap on his door. Opening it, he saw a little girl quite unknown to him. She was about twelve or so, he thought, and seemed to him pitifully unattractive. When he asked her what she wanted, she did not answer, but held out to him one of his cards, advertising his gifts and services. "If you are overcome with trouble and conditions that are not natural, I can remove them. Overcome spells, bad luck, and evil influences. Remember, I am a true spiritualist and psychic reader, born with power, and I will help you. Satisfaction in one visit. During many years of practice, I have brought together many in marriage and reunited many who were separated. If you are unhappy, discouraged, or in distress, I can help you. Does bad luck seem to follow you? Has the one you love changed? I can tell you why. I will tell you who your enemies and friends are, and if the one you love is true or false. If you are sick, I can show you the way to health. I locate lost and stolen articles. Satisfaction guaranteed." Soaphead Church told her to come in. "What can I do for you, my child?" She stood there, her hands folded across her stomach, a little protruding pot of tummy. "Maybe, maybe you can do it for me." "Do what for you?" "I can't go to school no more, and I thought maybe you could help me." "Help you how? Tell me, don't be frightened." "My eyes." "What about your eyes?" "I want them blue." Soaphead pursed his lips and let his tongue stroke a gold inlay. He thought it was at once the most fantastic and the most logical petition he had ever received. Here was an ugly little girl asking for beauty. A surge of love and understanding swept through him, but was quickly replaced by anger. Anger that he was powerless to help her. Of all the wishes people had brought him, money, love, revenge, this seemed to him the most poignant and the one most deserving of fulfillment. A little black girl who wanted to rise up out of the pit of her blackness and see the world with blue eyes. His outrage grew and felt like power. For the first time, he honestly wished he could work miracles. Never before had he really wanted the true and holy power, only the power to make others believe he had it. It seemed so sad, so frivolous, that mere mortality, not judgment, kept him from it. Or did it? With a trembling hand, he made the sign of the cross over her. His flesh crawled. In that hot, dim little room of worn things, he was chilled. "I can do nothing for you, my child. I am not a magician. I work only through the Lord. He sometimes uses me to help people. All I can do is offer myself to him as the instrument through which he works. If he wants your wish granted, he will do it." Soaphead walked to the window, his back to the girl. His mind raced, stumbled, and raced again, how to frame the next sentence, how to hang on to the feeling of power. His eye fell on old Bob, sleeping on the porch. "We must make a...some offering, that is, some contact with nature. Perhaps some simple creature might be the vehicle through which he will sleep. Let us see." He knelt down at the window and moved his lips. After what seemed a suitable length of time, he rose and went to the icebox that stood near the open window. From it, he removed a small packet wrapped in pinkish butcher paper. From a shelf, he took a small brown bottle and sprinkled some of its contents on the substance inside the paper. He put the packet, partly opened, on the table. "Take this food and give it to the creature sleeping on the porch. Make sure he eats it, and mark well how he behaves. If nothing happens, you will know that God has refused you. If the animal behaves strangely, your wish will be granted on the day following this The girl picked up the packet. The odor of the dark, sticky meat made her want to vomit. She put a hand on her stomach. "Courage, courage, my child. These things are not granted to faint hearts." She nodded and swallowed visibly, holding down the vomit. Soaphead opened the door, and she stepped over the threshold. "Goodbye. God bless," he said, and quickly shut the door. At the window, he stood watching her, his eyebrows pulled together into waves of compassion, his tongue fondling the worn gold in his upper jaw. He saw the girl bending down to the sleeping dog, who, at her touch, opened one liquid eye, matted in the corners with what looked like green glue. She reached out and touched the dog's head, stroking him gently. She placed the meat on the floor of the porch, near his nose. The odor roused him. He lifted his head and got up to smell it better. He ate it in three or four gulps. The girl stroked his head again, and the dog looked up at her with soft, triangle eyes. Suddenly, he coughed, the cough of a phlegmy old man, and got to his feet. The girl jumped. The dog gagged, his mouth chomping the air, and promptly fell down. He tried to raise himself, could not, tried again, and half-fell down the steps. Choking, stumbling, he moved like a broken toy around the yard. The girl's mouth was open, a little petal of tongue showing. She made a wild, pointless gesture with one hand and then covered her mouth with both hands. She was trying not to vomit. The dog fell again, a spasm jerking his body, then he was quiet. The girl's hands covering her mouth, she backed away a few feet, then turned, ran out of the yard and down the walk. Soaphead Church went to the table. He sat down, with folded hands balancing his forehead on the balls of his thumbs. Then he rose and went to a tiny night table with a drawer, from which he took paper and a fountain pen. A bottle of ink was on the same shelf that held the poison. With these things, he sat again at the table. Slowly, carefully, relishing his penmanship, he wrote the following letter. To he who greatly ennobled human nature by creating it. Dear God, the purpose of this letter is to familiarize you with facts which either have escaped your notice or which you have chosen to ignore. Once upon a time, I lived greenly and youngish on one of your islands. An island of the archipelago in the South Atlantic between North and South America, enclosing the Caribbean Sea and the Gulf of Mexico, divided into the Greater Antilles, the Lesser Antilles, and the Bahama Islands. Not the Winward or Leeward Island colonies mark you, but within, of course, the greater of the two antilles. While the precision of my prose may be a times laborious, it is necessary that I identify myself to you clearly. Now, we in this colony took as our own the most dramatic and the most obvious of our white master's characteristics, which were, of course, their worst. In retaining the identity of our race, we held fast to those characteristics most gratifying to sustain and least troublesome to maintain. Consequently, we were not royal, but snobbish, not aristocratic, but class-conscious. We believed authority was cruelty to our imperiors and education was being at school. We mistook violence for passion, indolence for leisure, and thought recklessness was freedom. We raised our children and reared our crops. We let infants grow and property develop. Our manhood was defined by acquisitions. Our womanhood, by acquiescence. And the smell of your fruit and the labor of your days, we abhorred. This morning, before the little black girl came, I cried for Velma. Oh, not aloud, there is no wind to carry, bear, or even refuse to bear, a sound so heavy with regret. But in my silent, own, lone way, I cried for Velma. You need to know about Velma to understand what I did today. She, Velma, left me the way people leave a hotel room. A hotel room is a place to be when you are doing something else. Of itself, it is of no consequence to one's major scheme. A hotel room is convenient, but its convenience is limited to the time you need it while you are in that particular town on that particular business. You hope it is comfortable, but prefer rather that it be anonymous. It is not, after all, where you live. When you no longer need it, you pay a little something for its use, say, "Thank you, sir," and when your business in that town is over, you go away from that room. Does anybody regret leaving a hotel room? Does anyone? Does anybody who has a home, a real home somewhere, want to stay there? Does anybody look back with affection or even disgust at a hotel room when they leave it? You can only love or despise whatever living was done in that room, but the room itself? But you take a souvenir, not, oh, not to remember the room, to remember rather the time and the place of your business, your adventure. What can anyone feel for a hotel room? One doesn't any more feel for a hotel room than one expects a hotel room to feel for its occupant. That heavenly, heavenly Father was how she left me, or rather, she never left me because she was never, ever there. You remember, do you, how and of what we are made? Let me tell you now about the breasts of little girls. I apologize for the inappropriateness, is that it? The imbalance of loving them at awkward times of day and in awkward places, and the tastelessness of loving those who belong to members of my family. Do I have to apologize for loving strangers? But you too are a miss here, Lord. How, why did you allow it to happen? How is it I could lift my eyes from the contemplation of your body and fall deeply into the contemplation of theirs? The buds, the buds on some of these saplings. They were mean, you know, mean and tender. Mean little buds resisting the touch, springing like rubber, but aggressive, daring me to touch, commanding me to touch, not a bit shy, as you'd suppose. They stuck out at me, oh, yes, at me. Slender-chested, finger-chested lassies. Have you ever seen them, Lord? I mean, really seen them. One could not see them and not love them. You who made them must have considered them lovely even as an idea. How much more lovely is the manifestation of that idea? I couldn't, as you must recall, keep my hands, my mouth, off them. Salt-sweet. Like not quite ripe strawberries, covered with the light salt sweat of running days and hopping, skipping, jumping hours. The love of them, the touch, taste, and feel of them was not just an easy luxurious human vice. They were for me a thing to do instead. Instead of Papa, instead of the cloth, instead of Velma, and I chose not to do without them. But I didn't go into the church. At least I didn't do that. As to what I did do, I told people I knew all about you, that I had received your powers. It was not a complete lie, but it was a complete lie. I should never have, I admit, I should never have taken their money in exchange for well-phrased, well-placed, well-faced lies. But, mark you, I hated it. Not for a moment did I love the lies or the money. But consider, the woman who left the hotel room, consider, the green time, the noon time of the archipelago. Consider, their hopeful eyes that were outdone only by their hoping breasts. Consider, how I needed a comfortable evil to prevent my knowing what I could not bear to know. Consider, how I hated and despised the money. And now, consider, not according to my just deserts, but according to my mercy, the little black girl that came alooning at me today. Tell me, Lord, how could you leave a last so long, so lone, that she could find her way to me? How could you? I weep for you, Lord, and it is because I weep for you that I had to do your work for you. Do you know what she came for? Blue eyes, new blue eyes, she said, like she was buying shoes. I'd like a pair of new blue eyes. She must have asked you for them for a very long time, and you hadn't replied. A habit, I could have told her, a long-ago habit broken for Job, but no more. She came to me for them. She had one of my cards, card enclosed. By the way, I added the Micah, Elihu Micah Whitcomb. But I am called Soaphead Church. I cannot remember how or why I got the name. What makes one name more a person than another? Is the name the real thing, then? And the person only but his name says? Is that why, to the simplest and friendliest of questions, what is your name, put to you by Moses, you would not say, and said instead, I am who I am? Like Popeye, I am what I am. Afraid you were, weren't you, to give out your name? Afraid they would know the name and then know you. Then they wouldn't fear you. It's quite all right. Don't be vexed. I mean no offense, I understand. I have been a bad man too, and an unhappy man too, but someday I will die. I was always so kind. Why do I have to die? The little girls, the little girls are the only things I'll miss. Do you know that when I touched their sturdy little tits and bit them, just a little, I felt I was being friendly? I didn't want to kiss their mouths, or sleep in the bed with them, or take a child bride for my own. Playful, I felt, and friendly. Not like the newspapers said, not like the people whispered. And they didn't mind at all, not at all. Remember how so many of them came back? No one would even try to understand that. If I'd been hurting them, would they have come back? Two of them, Doreen and Sugarbait? They've come together. I gave them mints, money, and they'd eat ice cream with their legs open while I played with them. It was like a party. And there wasn't nastiness, and there wasn't any filth, and there wasn't any odor, and there wasn't any groaning, just the light, white laughter of little girls and me. And there wasn't any look, any long, funny look, any long, funny Velma look afterward. No look that makes you feel dirty afterward, that makes you want to die. With little girls, it is all clean and good and friendly. You have to understand that, Lord. You said, suffer little children to come unto me and harm them not. Did you forget? Did you forget about the children? Yes, you forgot. You let them go wanting, sit on road shoulders, crying next to their dead mothers. I've seen them, charred, lame, halt. You forgot, Lord, you forgot how and when to be God. That's why I changed the little black girl's eyes for her. And I didn't touch her, not a finger did I lay on her. But I gave her those blue eyes she wanted, not for pleasure, not for money. I did what you did not, could not, would not do. I looked at that ugly little black girl, and I loved her. I played you, and it was a very good show. I, I have caused a miracle. I gave her the eyes. I gave her the blue, blue, two blue eyes, cobalt-blue, a streak of it, right out of your own blue heaven. No one else will see her blue eyes, but she will. And she will live happily ever after. I, I have found it meet and right so to do. Now you are jealous. You are jealous of me. You see? I too have created, not aboriginely, like you. But creation is a heady wine, more for the taster than the brewer. Having therefore imbibed, as it were, of the nectar, I am not afraid of you, of death, not even of life. And it's all right about Velma, and it's all right about Papa, and it's all right about the Greater and the Lesser Antilles, quite all right, quite. With kindest regards, I remain your Elihu Micah Whitcomb. Soaphead Church folded the sheets of paper into three equal parts, and slipped them into an envelope. Although he had no seal, he longed for sealing wax. He removed a cigar box from under the bed and rummaged about in it. There were some of his most precious things. A sliver of jade that had dislodged from a cuff-link at the Chicago Hotel. A gold pendant shaped like a Y with a piece of coral attached to it, that had belonged to the mother he never knew. Four large hairpins that Velma had left on the rim of the bathroom sink. A powder-blue grosgrain ribbon from the head of a little girl named Precious Jewel. A blackened faucet head from the sink in a jail cell in Cincinnati. Two marbles he had found under a bench in Morningside Park on a very fine spring day. An old Lucky Heart catalog that smelled still of nut-brown and mocha face powder and lemon vanishing cream. Distracted by his things, he forgot what he had been looking for. The effort to recall was too great. There was a buzzing in his head, and a wash of fatigue overcame him. He closed his box, eased himself out on the bed, and slipped into an ivory sleep from which he could not hear the tiny yelps of an old lady who had come out of her candy store and found the still carcass of an old dog named Bob. Summer. I have only to break into the tightness of a strawberry, and I see summer, its dust and lowering skies. It remains for me a season of storms. The parched days and sticky nights are undistinguished in my mind, but the storms, the violent, sudden storms, both frightened and quenched me. But my memory is uncertain. I recall a summer storm in the town where we lived, and imagine a summer my mother knew in nineteen twenty-nine. There was a tornado that year, she said, that blew away half of South Lorraine. I mix up her summer with my own. Biting the strawberry, thinking of storms, I see her. A slim young girl in a pink crepe dress. One hand is on her hip, the other lolls about her thigh, waiting. The wind swoops her up, high above the houses, but she is still standing, hand on hip, smiling. The anticipation and promise in her lolling hand are not altered by the Holocaust. In the summer tornado of nineteen twenty-nine, my mother's hand is unextinguished. She is strong, smiling, and relaxed, while the world falls down about her. So much for memory. Public fact becomes private reality, and the seasons of a midwestern town become the moiré of our small lives. The summer was already thick when Frida and I received our seeds. We had waited since April for the magic package containing packets and packets of seeds we were to sell for five cents each, which would entitle us to a new bicycle. We believed it, and spent a major part of every day trooping about the town, selling them. Although Mama had restricted us to the homes of the people she knew or the neighborhoods familiar to us, we knocked on all doors and floated in and out of every house that opened to us. Twelve-room houses that sheltered half as many families smelling of grease and urine. Tiny wooden four-room houses tucked into bushes near the railroad tracks. The up-over places, apartments up over fish markets, butcher shops, furniture stores, saloons, restaurants, tidy brick houses with flowered carpets and glass bowls with fluted edges. During that summer of the seed-selling, we thought about the money, thought about the seeds, and listened with only half an ear to what people were saying. In the houses of people who knew us, we were asked to come in and sit, given cold water or lemonade, and while we sat there being refreshed, the people continued their conversations or went about their chores. Little by little, we began to piece a story together, a secret, terrible, awful story. And it was only after two or three such vaguely overheard conversations that we realized that the story was about Piccola. Properly placed, the fragments of talk ran like this. Did you hear about that girl? What, pregnant? Yes, but guess who? Who? I don't know all these little old boys. That's just it, ain't no little old boy. They say it's Charlie. Charlie? Her daddy? Uh-huh. Lord have mercy, that dirty nigger. Remember that time he tried to burn them up? I knew he was crazy for sure then. What's she gonna do? The mama? Keep on like she been, I reckon. He taking off. County ain't gonna let her keep that baby, is they? I don't know. None of them Breedlove seemed right anyhow. That boy is off somewhere every minute, and the girl was always foolish. Don't nobody know nothing about them anyway, where they come from or nothing. Don't seem to have no people. What you reckon made him do a thing like that? Beats me just nasty. Well, they ought to take her out of school. Ought to? She carries some of the blame. Oh, come on. She ain't but twelve or so. Yeah, but you never know. How come she didn't fight him? Maybe she did. Yeah? You never know. Well, it probably won't live. They say the way her mama beat her, she lucky to be alive herself. She'd be lucky if it don't live. Bound to be the ugliest thing walking. Can't help but be, ought to be a law. Two ugly people doubling up like that make more ugly, be better off in the ground. Well, I wouldn't worry none. It'd be a miracle if it lived. Our astonishment was short-lived, for it gave way to a curious kind of defensive shame. We were embarrassed for Piccola, hurt for her, and finally, we just felt sorry for her. Our sorrow drove out all thoughts of the new bicycle. And I believe our sorrow was the more intense because nobody else seemed to share it. They were disgusted, amused, shocked, outraged, or even excited by the story. But we listened for the one who would say, poor little girl, or, poor baby. But there was only head-wagging where those words should have been. We looked for eyes creased with concern, but saw only veils. I thought about the baby that everybody wanted dead, and saw it very clearly. It was in a dark, wet place, its head covered with great o's of wool, the black face holding, like nickels, two clean black eyes, the flared nose, kissing-thick lips, and the living, breathing silk of black skin. No synthetic yellow bangs suspended over marble-blue eyes, no pinched nose and bovine mouth. More strongly than my fondness for Piccola, I felt a need for someone to want the black baby to live just to counteract the universal love of white baby dolls, Shirley Temples, and Maureen Peals. And Frida must have felt the same thing. We didn't think of the fact that Piccola was not married, lots of girls had babies who were not married. And we didn't dwell on the fact that the baby's father was Piccola's father too. The process of having a baby by any male was incomprehensible to us. At least she knew her father. We thought only of this overwhelming hatred for the unborn baby. We remembered Mrs. Breedlove knocking Piccola down and soothing the pink tears of the frozen baby doll that sounded like the door of our icebox. We remembered the knuckled eyes of schoolchildren under the gaze of meringue pie and the eyes of these same children when they looked at Piccola. Or maybe we didn't remember, we just knew. We had defended ourselves since memory against everything and everybody, considered all speech a code to be broken by us, and all gestures subject to careful analysis. We had become headstrong, devious, and arrogant. Nobody paid us any attention, so we paid very good attention to ourselves. Our limitations were not known- Our limitations were not known to us, not then. Our only handicap was our size. People gave us orders because they were bigger and stronger. So it was with confidence, strengthened by pity and pride, that we decided to change the course of events and alter a human life. What we gonna do, Frida? What can we do? Miss Johnson said it would be a miracle if it lived. So let's make it a miracle. Yeah, but how? We could pray. That's not enough. Remember last time with the bird? That was different. It was half-dead when we found it. I don't care. I still think we have to do something really strong this time. Let's ask him to let Piccola's baby live and promise to be good for a whole month. Okay, but we better give up something so he'll know we really mean it this time. Give up what? We ain't got nothing. Nothing but the seed money, two dollars. We could give that. Or, you know what? We could give up the bike, bury the money, and plant the seed. All of the money? Claudia, do you wanna do it or not? Okay, I just thought... Okay. We have to do it right now. We'll bury the money over by her house so we can't go back and dig it up. And we'll plant the seeds out back of our house so we can watch over them. And when they come up, we'll know everything is all right, all right? All right. Only let me sing this time. You say the magic words.
This ends side one of cassette five. Please turn the cassette over and start side two at the same point. Context of White Supremacy. Folks listening in on the Talk Shoe line, I got disconnected for a quick moment, but should be back now, should be able to hear with no issues, no worries. All good, well, not all good, apologies, not all good, but at least the audio should be straight. Anywho. Almost at the end of the book, almost at the end of the book, one more side to go. The number to dial in for folks who want to share their thoughts, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six. And the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you have questions. Star eight if you're on the Talk Shoe line. Star six if you are on the seven six zero number. That number again is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six. And the code is five six four nine four three pound. Let's see, I think this might be Bmore with A and Bmore. Your line should be open. I'll open up the others as we roll.
Um, peace, Gus, and all the other listeners. Yes, this is Bmore. Um, goodness, I don't know where to start. Very sad, um, segment. Um, I guess I'll talk about the gossiping about Piccola. Uh, I think it was really crazy how they said that she was to blame. Here she is a twelve-year-old girl, um, a victim of incest by her own father, and they're sitting around gossiping, uh, I think adult women, sitting around gossiping about her. No one's been empathetic, talking about she's the one to blame and how the baby's gonna be ugly and deserve to die. Um, Precious came to mind. Uh, I watched that movie one time. I was scarred by it. I couldn't get the images out of my head, but that's the movie that came to mind. Um, and I just wanna say we're all guilty of blaming the victim. It's like breaking somebody's legs and calling them crippled. And that's all I have to say.
Uh, person nine three two five, nine three two five, your line should be open.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what jumped out at me is, uh, Soaphead Church was the third male that was involved in, uh, sexual molestation. Uh, the first it was, I believe, Mr. Henry, and then it was Charlie and now Soaphead Church. And so we got a continuation of, you know, this blackmail, uh, terror going on here. But I thought too, it was significant that, uh, Claudia, uh, escaped, you know, any type of, uh, sexual perversion. Her little sister was molested by, um, Mr. Henry. And then, of course, uh, Piccola, uh, her father. And then Soaphead Church. And Soaphead Church, to me, seemed like when he wrote the letter to God, that he was somewhat insane because he felt he was, uh, telling God something or that he was doing something that God could not do. But that's, that's insane in itself. And then the fact that he didn't like to touch human flesh, but then he liked little girls. He was a real twisted puppy, you know, and it makes you wonder if there really are people in the world that, you know, think like him. I think it was an amazing feat for Toni Morrison to let us peep into the mind of a pedophile. But, uh, you know, it's pretty gruesome, so... That's it for now. Maybe I could just say something else.
I'll keep, uh, an eye out for other callers if they wanna add, uh, before we get to segment two, if people have other thoughts they wanna share on the first segment. But that section where she's kinda, I guess, breaking down or giving you the perspective of Soaphead Church and he's kind of, uh, rationalizing his, uh, sexual molestation and rape of these young girls. Uh, when you said you, uh, paraphrasing what you were saying, basically you couldn't, uh, imagine someone thinking this way. It reminded me of the, uh, the New York Times, or yeah, the New York Times Magazine. They have a whole series on, uh, prep school predators. And there's a section where they have a pedophile. Uh, he's, I don't know, he's, he's old now. He's like in his seventies, eighties, he's retired from teaching. And he admits that, you know, yes, I was sexually involved with several of my students, and he talks about it, and it sounds eerily similar to the passage where Soaphead Church is talking like, "What are you talking about? They kept coming back, and do you think they would've come back if I had been hurting them? And it was just great. It was a wonderful relationship, and, you know, I don't understand why, or how anyone could conclude that something wrong was happening here." I mean, it sounds eerily similar. Um, I don't wanna read the, uh, the whole article, but, uh, it was in the New York Times in June. I have it, uh, I have it bookmarked, so I can just give out the link. I don't wanna, I don't wanna read it from folks to take away from Toni Morrison's text, but it, like, I mean, you talk about on the money. She could've just substituted what this guy said, uh, to the New York Times Magazine and just put it in the bluest eyes. She would've, she would've hit it exactly. While I'm looking for that, I know, uh, one other thing that stood out for me just looking for patterns. Uh, we were talking earlier about... We were talking earlier about, uh, this pattern, uh, this, uh, misbehavior. Um, Charlie Breedlove, who's Piccola's father, molesting her. Mr. Henry, the boarder who lived with the, uh, McTiers. Uh, Claudia and Frida, uh, they stayed with them. And, uh, now Soaphead Church. Mr. Breedlove, uh, Charlie Breedlove, Piccola's father, he had a very similar line to what Soaphead Church just shared, um, when he said that he was powerless and impotent. We talked about it last, or I highlighted it last week, uh, him the moments before he goes to rape Piccola, uh, where he talks about how, just looking at her, it's so similar. He's looking at her like, my gosh, what does she do at eleven to be so broken and defeated? And he's looking at her and he's saying, "I'm a black male. I'm supposed to be her father, and I'm powerless and impotent to do anything, to help her, uh, to assist her, to make anything better for her." And you have Soaphead Church, black, another black male, saying almost the same thing. I have this pedophile... I'm sorry?
No, I didn't say it.
Oh, okay. Um, so, yeah, you, you have another black male coming in and making a similar admission that, you know, "I am helpless to do anything. What can I do for you, uh, other than, you know, something sexual? Even if that's not the correct thing to do, that would really be the worst thing to do. That is about the only power that I have as a black male. Uh, that is about the only way that I can exert any force, influence, even a semblance of power, uh, if you are a female, is sexually." Um, that just really stood out to me that it's so, somehow I think that was what we heard last week.
Yes, another thing I wanted to mention was I had always thought of impotence being a like, a lack of being able to perform sexually. But, you know, since reading this book and discussing and I've, uh, looked the definition up, it's just means weakness or a lack of strength. So you could actually use the word impotent, uh, in another way. You could, you could actually say that, you know, the black male in America, in a racist society, would be impotent. And that could be a true statement, and it wouldn't have anything to do with, uh, sexual.
My YouTube video, got that definition at the very beginning, definition for impotence. And Mr. Fuller has said that. I think that's one of our recognized sound clips from the cows. Mr. Fuller saying that the most impotent creature on the planet in the form of a person is the black male. Uh, I don't think he was talking sexual. I think that was the definition that you just shared. I think that's the definition he was using for, uh, impotence. But, uh, yeah, I could not agree more. I think this book makes that point repeatedly. Um, eight one six two, your line is open. One nine nine six, your lines are also open.
Yes, hello?
Greetings, Gus. This is Minnie B. Chubidoo.
Chubidoo, Bruce Vaughn, Minnie B., Chubidoo.
I found you. The Talk, uh, Talk Shoe was not working today. Hmm. Um, but as I was listening, uh, I was just fascinated by Toni Morrison's use of language, and I found myself for a moment, uh, even feeling twistedly seduced by her words as, uh, as I was reading along with, uh, the audio. And, um, I think that really speaks to the power of Toni Morrison's, um, ability to communicate and be descriptive of these experiences of the various characters.
What do you mean by you're being seduced? What do you mean by that?
Uh, just being, being so drawn into, uh, as she's describing these, uh, these, the pedophiles and how, you know, at one point, it's violent, pernicious, but the eloquence in which she, uh, brings us into their mind. It is like, oh, well, wow, okay, I guess if you're thinking like that, I could see how you would become a pedophile. And it's, it's, um, and it was, uh, yeah, that's what I mean. Seduced by the language and, and, and the words.
I think was also significant how, um, Soaphead Church kept these sort of trinkets of like, uh, like the ribbon from the little girl and the hair bows and all this type stuff. Like, that was, that was really crazy too. And how he opened the box and forgot what he was even looking for in the beginning because he was so, I guess, entranced by all these little things that he forgot what he was looking for. And it must have suited him so much that he was able to go to sleep.
Well, I, I think that's where that seduction of each of these trinkets is. He, he was remembering molesting each, you know, each, each person associated with the, the, the trinket. Reliving it in a way.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay, I just had, um, two points that I wanted to make. Um, the first one, I was listening to how, uh, Soaphead was talking about molesting the girls. It reminded me, well, it made me think of the Catholic Church and, you know, all of the scandal that they have about molesting children, even though it's normally boys that, you know, we hear about them molesting. But I'm just wondering, is that like some of the same kind of words that they use to try to, you know, justify the things that they do to children, the way that they do to children? And I was also thinking, sometimes when I was listening, you know, to the part about Soaphead, I was thinking about how sometimes, um, like, we give preachers and, you know, people who are supposed to be spiritual advisors a lot of power. And I think that sometimes we put them, we exalt them so that we look at them as they are, like, like they're the creator. And then, you know, if, if a child comes to you and tells you something that the person did, you can't see, you can't separate the person from, you know, being this deity or whatever, and you can't, you don't really believe the child. So I just thought that was really, um, that was really telling because I think that that's something that happens a lot in our community. And I'm not, I'm not really sure why that happens that way, but I, it happens a lot. And that was, you know, that's very upsetting for me. But I was also wondering, like, why was it that her friends, the two sisters, were the only ones who seemed to be concerned with how, um, the little girl may be feeling after being pregnant and being raped by her father? That's really all I had to say.
I'd say that's pretty standard. Um, at least for this book, anyway, I think it's pretty standard. Unfortunately, I would say it's pretty standard, uh, in real life, uh, where people who are black people, who are victims of some sort of sexual molestation, don't get the appropriate response from adults. I think we talked about that over and over and over, uh, where they do not get any attention. They do not get any concern. No one comes to them with hordes of, of counseling options and to hold their hand and, you know, to really make sure that they, everything possible is done to help that person heal. That doesn't typically happen for, whether it's a black female child or a black male child, that typically doesn't happen. So I'd say the book, unfortunately, it accurately captures what tends to take place for black children. Um, but I think the same thing hap- I think we talked about it when, I think it was, uh, Frida Claw- mixing up the two siblings, but, uh, either Frida, Frida or Claudia when they were, uh, Mr. Henry, uh, attempted to sexually molest them. And, uh, we talked about how the adults didn't really do any talking to the children. You know, they got the shotgun, got the broom, ran Mr. Henry off, but nobody went, really went to, uh, do anything with the children, to talk to them about what happened, see how they were feeling about it, to make sure they were okay. And you ended up with them running around trying to get liquor, uh, from Piccola's father. So, I would say it's pretty standard, uh, both in the book and real time on the plantation.
I agree. I, I think it's pretty standard also. And, um, like I know with me, my mother and my father, they just used to always talk to me, all from, I can't even remember what age, but from very young, from early on, they were always talking to us about that, me and my brother. So, I think, you know, having that knowledge about, you know, your body and boundaries and what's right and what's not right, I think that's just really important. When we find some kind of way to get a room or whatever it is that we feel about, you know, discussing those kinds of issues because it's, it's happening too much in, um, our community and, you know, with no schooling, it can just happen anywhere. I want to get more comfortable discussing it with our, um, with our children.
I'm getting a little background noise. If y'all could watch that. Uh, I made an error not to custom, uh, to some of the voices yet. I thought that was Bruce Fine, and it was not. Um, the caller who's just speaking, um, my bad. I do, uh, agree with the commentary though. Uh, Bruce Fine is with us, and, uh, I think this is, uh, B-More dialing back in to the rest of the folks. If you have questions or comments, uh, you would like to add, press star six and I'll get your line as well. But, uh, Bruce Fine, you should be with us. Uh, B-More, your line should be back open. And everybody else who's already with us, your lines are still open. Just watch the background noise.
Okay, can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I was saying, can I be heard like a thousand times? I, I had to hang up and dial back in. But I wanted to, um, make a, a comment about, uh, Soaphead using God and the Bible to justify his, uh, pedophilia. I, I remember when I was a, a teenager, um, this white guy, he had, uh, so-called retired from, uh, uh, being the owner of a, um, quote unquote prostitution house, whorehouse out in Las Vegas for thirty years. And he said to, uh, I think he was on, uh, twenty twenty or something, and he said that he believes he did not do anything incorrect because he feels that if he was doing something incorrect, God would have killed him or, or God would have, uh, caused his, uh, empire to be, uh, shut down or, or closed. So, it, it, it's so many people who will say what Soaphead said. Well, you know, I can't be doing anything correct. They're enjoying it. It's not smelly. It's not, they're giggling and, and, and all of these things. And that right there, them needing to justify, to, uh, tells me that they indeed know that what they're doing is incorrect, but they just have no desire to stop it. So, they have to be able to sleep at night or sleep during the day whenever they sleep. And, uh, this is how they live with themselves. They say that God is okay with it, uh, that, that their victim is okay with it. And just, uh, to also make the point with the, uh, caller said about, um, holding these, uh, men and women up to such high standards. Um, I, I think about how the Catholic people, they refer to the Pope as the Holy Father. I, I think he's called the Holy Father. And I'm, I'm saying to myself, as far as the Bible is concerned, I think that's the name that Jesus has given or God himself is given. And to confess your quote unquote sins to another person for forgiveness. I mean, from my understanding, that's what people in the Catholic Church does. And that, that is indeed putting these people, these men, in the position of God. And, uh, you know, religion is, 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 it's very powerful. And that's it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I think, um, once we put these men and women, you know, who are, who are just plain old human beings, you know, once we put them in that position, then, you know, they, they can do just about anything. They can say just about anything. And a lot of times we'll just fall for a hook, line and sinker as if we're hearing something from, you know, like a God or the Creator or something like that. So, I, I agree.
I'm sorry. And then what, and what doubly sad is that, you know, uh, for those who believe in the Bible or what have you, it clearly states, you know, that God is saying that these people are not of me, that I didn't send these people. I didn't, you know, do this. But, but what these people count on is that they, because they are the ones that when you come into their organization, they teach you the tenants of their organization. And a lot of people aren't, uh, initially like, uh, um, I guess you could say, uh, schooled in, in the very Bible that, um, these people say that they are teaching from. So, if you don't pick it up yourself and know what's in there yourself, then these, uh, people who are really not representing, you know, if you, if you will, God, they're misrepresenting, you won't realize that they, they are not, you know, the Holy Father or they aren't, you should not be confessing your sins to another fallible human being.
Yeah, exactly.
This is nine three two five. Can I be heard?
Yes.
I was wondering what the other callers felt about the church women and the way that they dealt or they're coping, the way that they're coping with the different things that are happening, poverty, racism, sexism, the way they talk about prostitutes, the way that they, uh, talk about Pacola when, you know, in, but when the little girls overheard the, um, even when they was talking at Aunt Betsy's funeral, you know, that gossip, like. Can anybody speak on that?
This is Minnie B. I'd like to respond. And, uh, my thoughts about the church women is that, uh, they feel that the Bible entitles them to behave in, in such a manner. They don't see-
Oh, this, oh, my goodness.
I was just gonna say, they don't see their behavior, the gossiping and mistreatment as, as, uh, unholy because they're, they're of the church.
Right, yeah, I think- Um, and I agree as well. I feel like the women, they were being, um, just like I've noticed a lot of people who, who go to church, I'm not gonna, well, that was a generalization, but a lot of people in my life, um, that go to church, they're reactive and not really proactive. Um, I remember one caller being on the line. He said something, he had an issue with the roommate or something, and the roommate said, "You're not gonna do anything. All you're gonna do is pray." And that's really all it is. Like, they're not really being active and they're not trying to help this little girl. All they're doing is sitting there talking about her, gossiping about it, rather than try to show her, show her the love that she didn't get and trying to be there for her. They're just sitting around gossiping about her, grown women gossiping about a child, um, that was sexually abused by her father. So, yeah, they're, they're being reactive and not really proactive.
Right, can I be heard? Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, and, right, and that, that, that's so true. And that, that's something else that, 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 um, you know, the Bible speaks to, that you're gonna, you're gonna have all, all different sorts of people who, uh, are sitting in the pews. You know, you, and it, it talks about, you know, how you're gonna have people who are just attending. And they are not, um, carrying themselves the way that, you know, that the, the scriptures would, would have them carry themselves. They, but yet they'll walk around and say, "I am, you know, of the Lord" or whatever. And, um, and many times, of course, society, I think, just lumps everyone in, into, um, the same basket and, and say, "Oh, you, you say you are a Christian," or "You say you are, um, you know, a representative of, of the church" or whatever. And look at you, look at, and, and, and then the Bible, it says, "You'll know a tree by the fruit that it bears." So, if this person is not, uh, uh, carrying themselves in, in the ways that, um, the Bible's saying that a true or real follower of God or, or Christ would, then you can conclude that this person is, as Gus plays the song, just frontin'. And, um, you know, and, 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 so you got a lot of, um, fakers. And again, the Bible says that you, you got all, that, that the weak and the terrible will grow up together and that God will do the separating, that you're, you're gonna have people misrepresenting God. They, they are misrepresenting the organization that they say that they are part of, even in the secular world. You're gonna have all kind of sorts of people who say, you know, for example, I'm, I, I believe in what the cows teach you, you know, whatever. And everything about their actions is, is contrary to what, um, Gus may represent or Mr. Fuller or Dr. Welzing or, or what have you. And so, just like in the secular world, you have it in the, the so-called church world.
Yeah, that's true. Um, I think, I, I used to go to church a lot. I don't go to church anymore. But for me, and this is like only, you know, my personal experience, I think sometimes some of the older women in the church are, um, jealous or insecure of, about some of the younger women in the church. Because a lot of times, there would be times when, you know, my friends and I would go to church and, you know, we wouldn't get that warm, welcoming feeling from, you know, some of the older women. And I'm, I'm not really sure why that was, but I think sometimes a lot of it has to do with jealousy. It could be looks, it could be, you know, youth, it could be, it could be a number of things. But I think a lot of times, um, that boil, that boils down to just plain old jealousy.
Um, wanted to check one of our other lines, but, uh, I think this goes to, uh, the caller's question about the behavior in the church as well as, I think it was Minnie B. saying she, uh, was seduced by the language. And, uh, I listened to a lot of Toni, well, I listened to quite a few Toni Morrison, uh, interviews about the bluest eye. And she said that that was a part, one of her objectives. Uh, she says that the story, if you wanna know what happens in the story, she tells you all that on the first two pages. Like, there's no mystery, there's no suspense about what's gonna go down. That has already been laid out on the first two pages. So, if you are reading, you are reading for the how things happened or because you fall in love with the language. And she says, "I hope both happen." And I thi- matter of fact, I will just read before I give the Toni Morrison, the article that I was referencing about the Soaphead Church character in real life. It's on the New York Times. I put it in the chatroom. Retired Horseman Teacher Admits to Sex with Students. This is from June twenty-third, two thousand twelve. He said, uh, he had this male, he said he had sex with his students, maybe three, I don't know. Crossing boundaries, he said, were not so clear years ago. And he had that same reverence as a teacher at a prestigious, elite, private boarding school. He said in quotes, "In those days, it was very spontaneous and casual. It did not seem really wrong." Same rationalization. He goes on, there's more in the article, but just that one sentence, if you wanna check it out, you can read more. Now, back to Toni Morrison and how you can be seduced with the language. I hope people didn't just skim over this part in the audio. This is on page, uh, one twenty-four of the book. She says, uh, in, and this is Soaphead Church speaking. "In retaining the identity of our race, we held fast to those characteristics most gratifying to sustain and least troublesome to maintain." The poetry in the words, and it's like, what a profound sentence. I'll even read that one more time. She's talking about black people. "In retaining the identity of our race, we held fast to those characteristics most gratifying to sustain and least troublesome to maintain. Consequently, we were not royal but snobbish, not aristocratic but class-conscious. We believed authority was cruelty to our inferiors and education was being at school. We mistook violence for passion, indolence for leisure and thought recklessness was freedom. We raised our children and reared our crops. We let infants grow and property develop. Our manhood was defined by acquisitions, our womanhood by acquiescence. And the smell of your fruit and the labor of your days, we abhorred."
Wow, wow, wow.
She speaks truth to the human, to the, to the, the black experience in America.
Right, but what gets me in one interview, I think she was saying, she didn't necessarily say that it wasn't relevant to today, but I think she was saying something about, uh, maybe the black women's self-esteem or something like that is not the same as it was in the book or something, but wow, her, her work is still definitely relevant, definitely.
And, and speaking of black women in the church, I think that there was several generations or maybe even, maybe current, I have turned my back on it, but, um, that there was a time when, you know, the, the only, the only so-called power of black women could exercise was being in the church. That many women in the South were somebody's maid and they wore a uniform six days of the week, but on Sunday, that was when, you know, they, they, they had all the finery. They could exercise that. And that, that the church was maybe the one safe place to, um, pretend that they had any kind of power. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? Women's Day and Founder's Day, all that. They were in control because they weren't in control anything else.
Yeah, I think that, that is definitely something that is, is still on display. Uh, most definitely.
I think that line in the passage, uh, where, yes, so many of them, uh, "We were not royal but snobbish. Uh, we believed authority was cruelty to our inferiors." I think both of those, uh, segments, I think they go a long way to explaining or to help understand the rampant gossip in the black church and, uh, just amongst the black people, period, under racism, white supremacy. Uh, I think that's one of the, the few ways we feel like we can, we can exert some, some power, uh, over someone else, uh, just talking bad about them and, oh, this person. I mean, you hear it all throughout the book, uh, where the black females are talking about the black prostitutes, uh, Maginot Line, not calling them the correct name, that sort of thing. The prostitutes talking bad about other people, even the males, uh, you hear it all throughout the book. Um, just people talking bad about other black folks.
But where do they come from that, is it not other black folks or-
But where do they come from that, is it not other black folks, or were they exercising the oral tradition?
Could it be both?
No, I don't know how many, we're talking about reading the newspaper or anything, but that's how this information kind of, were they gossiping at the table? Or was this their, was there this passive-aggressive way of, uh, alerting each other? Keep your, keep your daughters away from so-and-so? Or this is what she's going, I, yeah, I think maybe both were going on.
I, I wonder how much of this behavior was actually mimicking what they saw white people doing. I mean, white, white people make careers out of, and loads of money out of gossiping. They, they have gossip columns, gossip magazines, gossip this, that, and the other. I wonder how much gossiping they would do, you know, since a lot of these black women were in their homes a lot, how much they witnessed. And when you are, uh, in, in, in a position, uh, that we've been in, and, and they are, they put themselves up as supreme and doing everything right. So how much more would we be emulating them? Uh, this is the right thing to do, talk, talk about. I'm, I'm mimicking and imitating what I see. Um, I, I'm just wondering.
Hello, I'm Tony Murray here.
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Um, I just wanted to bring up a quick topic that was a little off-topic. Um, is that okay, Gus? It's something that's kinda really important that I wanted to share with everybody. Um, the issue that I wanted to bring up is that I was facing foreclosure. You were watching, huh? I'm sorry.
Because I, I didn't, I mean, if you were asking me a question, um...
Yeah, um, um, I didn't know if you heard me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, it depends, I would like to, because this is our last session on Blue Stye, so I would like to try to spend as much time as possible. Is it, is it totally irrelevant to what we're talking about?
Um, just a teed bit, but I'm gonna come back, I, I'll be real quick, I promise. I only want, I'll spend a minute, and it'll be real quick.
Okay.
I promise. Um, I'm, I'm facing foreclosure here in DC, and it's something that I was going through for about a couple of years now. And the only thing that I wanted to share was that as long as I was trying to make payments every single month, the bank would not work with me. Once I actually just said, you know what, I'm gonna take the money instead of paying every month, and put it into a separate account, and just save the money. I allowed that, the house went into, um, I would, just went past four months, they put it into foreclosure. That's when they wanted to work with me, and I actually got the bank to start working with me. Before then, they would not work with me, even though I, they said that even though I was able to make payments, they wouldn't work with me. Only when I stopped making payments and allowed the house to go into foreclosure, that the bank wanted to work with me. So I don't know if anybody else is going through those kind of situations, but I just kinda wanted to put that out there, that you're not out there alone. The other thing was that, um, one of the other callers brought up, um, a Christian. I don't know if most people know that, when you say that I'm a Christian, there are six things that goes along with, "I am a Christian." And it's not that I walk a certain way, or I just believe in Jesus Christ. Because most people try to separate, um, a Baptist or Southern Methodist from Catholicism, they don't really understand what it means when they say, "I am a Christian." And one of those things is that you believe in an infallibility of the Bible. Means that any and everything that's written in the Bible, it's true, no matter what. No matter what the pastor says, if the pastor say it, it is true. So if you don't fully understand the definitions that the Catholic Church says that what it means to be a, a Christian, then I think people really need to revisit that. Uh, um, lastly, um, Tyler Perry, one of the movies that he put out, um, Madea's Big Family. I don't know if a lot of people saw that, that was the one that had Bow Wow in it. And within the movie, no one could understand why the sister was a B in the whole movie. Like, she hated everybody, she was disrespectful to her mother, she was disrespectful to everybody. And then right before the movie ended, at the end, they finally said the elephant in the room, that she was raped. So the whole time, and I think it's something that you brought up too, Gus, even though her mother and everybody went to church and they said, "Just pray about it," they never got the young lady help. So because they never got her help, and the family never dealt with the issue as a family, it just festered inside of her until they ate her up inside, and she was just evil to everybody. And everybody knew what was going on. The whole neighborhood knew that she was raped by her uncle, but no one never got her help. They never got the little boy help, so, you know, it just grew up to be a mess. So that's all I wanted to put out, Gus, that bit of information. Thank you.
That, that, that's one thing about, I think, a, um, something that is with human beings, that everybody has an idea about how something is to be represented. I'm sure within the so-called conscious, uh, uh, black community or movement, you, you know, some people say you approach white supremacy or to counter it this way, and some say you do it that way, and some over here say, everybody has an idea about how, uh, things are to be, uh, represented. And that, and that's, that's the problem, I think, you know, with, when you're dealing with human beings. It's, um, you're gonna have, wh- what, like, uh, thinking about what Joe from DC said. Everybody has six, seven, eight different definitions of what a Christian is. And I think Joe would know that, that Paul talked about all these doctrines going out. Some of them even came up from under his teaching and went abroad teaching something different. And, uh, that's just unfortunately, uh, uh, a dynamic that is, uh, being human. That people are a trip, and, uh, they're gonna do their own thing. If they feel like you aren't moving fast enough, or you're not approaching it this way, they, they may start out with you. And then they go on and, 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 and do their own thing, you know? And then that's how you have all of these different agendas, and, and all are saying, "I'm working towards," uh, all of them are using the same word. "I'm working towards," for example, uh, uh, justice for, uh, black people. And you got fifty different million, fifty million different approaches, you know? So I think the same...
I agree.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree, I feel like, I was gonna say, I agree. I feel like, um, schools of thought in the conscious community are no different, are no better than church denominations. People are like, "Oh, I'm five percenter, I'm New Olympian, I'm whatever, NOI, I'm this, I'm that." It's the same as being Muslim, or Christian, or Buddhist, or what have you, it's no different. And unity is the key, I feel like. I mean, I see truth in it all, and that's one thing I do stand on is unity. I know they all have differences, but they all have similarities as well. And I feel like that's our biggest problem, we can't unite. We always wanna branch off and do our, our own separate things, like, we all need to have some common goal. And that's why I really respect the, uh, the code, sorry. Because it's supposed to be universal. But, go ahead, sorry.
And I, I think even with, now, I'm, I'm not a scholar or anything. Within even like the Catholic Church, you, you have this sect who said, "Oh, well, we believe there should be female preachers or bishops or whatever. Oh, well, we're gonna start our own de- uh, denomination. Oh, well, we feel such and such should be going on." And the big boys, you know, at the top, say, "Well, no, we don't do it that way. We're gonna go and start our own sect, and we're gonna be called the, uh, uh, women bishop preachers, Baptist Catholic first, you know, so-and-so." And that, this is how, whether it's the church, whether it's whatever. This is how, I don't think it's just a, a black thing. I think it, it, because I often say before, we are black, white, this, that, and the other. There are just some dynamics to being a human being. And we as human beings get stuff in our head, and we disagree. And sometimes, you know, we're correct, and sometimes we're incorrect. We believe that such and such should go this way, and such and such should go that way. And then we, we leave, you know, "I'm, I'm outta here," you know? Or we'll stay and complain, or what, that's a dynamic that I think is across the board when you're dealing with imperfect beings. Black, white, Hispanic, you know, brown, you know, whatever. I'm, I think if you go to any group, we will find some common things in each group. And I think all would say, "We're not united enough, we're, we're fussing with each other, we're not doing this and this." And we're over here thinking, you know, that these other groups are so united or whatever. It's almost like even the, the single par- the single person and the married person. The, the single person may be looking at the married couple and going, "Mm, I sure wish I was married." And the married couple looking over there at the single person, "Ooh, sometimes I sure wish I was single." It's, it's, it's like, we, we are just something else, you know? It's, 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 you know?
We had one other person join, hang on one second, hang on one second. We had one person, a new person join the call. Uh, I can get the switchboard to cooperate. Uh, I think last four digits, three, three, take this down, three, three, five, eight, three, three, five, eight. Did you have a question or comment? Hopefully we can stick to the book, Toni Morrison's.
I came in late, bruh, I didn't even hear you reading it. I just came in and started listening to everybody talking. So I tried to jump into conversation.
Oh.
So I missed a part, I missed, I had, I had to go work out, bro, you know, I had to stay in shape. And, uh, you know, I had some, I had some things go down, it was crazy, but, uh, I have, uh, I got, I got a partner that live out there in Seattle. And, uh, still, and he, uh, he's a psychologist, or psychiatrist, I think he's a psychologist, psychiatrist, I mean. He worked in the, uh, juvenile jails out there, so we was having a long conversation. So I'm trying to get him to call in, 'cause, uh, uh, we got a little different views, but he, you know, he just don't think that racism and white supremacy is the end all result. He just think, you know, some of this stuff can be controlled. And I'm, I'm trying to get him to call in. But he's, uh, he's from DC, but never heard of Francis Russell. And I was like, wow, you know? I didn't think that was possible, but, uh, I guess it could be.
How old is this person?
Uh, he's forty-four.
Oh, Lord, okay. Um, for that person, I would say, um...
Hey, man, I'm forty-two.
Oh, but see, you didn't let me finish, you didn't let me finish. You didn't let me finish. Uh, so you seem to be a little less confused, if it's somebody...
Yeah, he ain't that confused, he ain't that confused, man, you know? Just that, you know, he's, just need a little nudge in the logic, you know? 'Cause he's, he, he, uh, he, uh, not long ago, he, he turned to, to being a Muslim, practicing Muslim. So, you know, there is possibility for, you know, he just needs to be nudged. Or logic has to be brought in to play. He has to face the logic, basically, like what I did. I had to face the logic. Like the brother earlier said it, uh, to be a Christian, you mean you have to...
Hang on, hang on one second, 'cause we are, we are going way deviating. We still got a whole nother segment of Blue Stye to get to.
Oh.
I wanna make sure we have time to exchange views on a very important book. Uh, so I would say, uh, the call-in, this would be apropos for tomorrow evening. Dial in if he wants to join your, your friend. If he wants to join in, that would be, uh, the time, and we get to devote a lot of time to that, uh, tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, for the call-in. Um, at any rate, uh, back to Toni Morrison, Blue Stye. Um, we have a whole nother audio segment to go, uh, so I wanna make sure we have adequate time, not just for that to play, but for people to have an opportunity to respond. This is the concluding segment, uh, so this should be all she wrote for Toni Morrison's The Blue Stye. Uh, I will go ahead and play segment two, and then I'll open up everybody's lines again, so we can hear feedback. Uh, take notes while it's playing, take notes. You can remember, I'm sure there'll be some things that will stick out. If you were seduced by the language of, uh, Toni Morrison, and I think many readers have been, I would say just stay tuned, uh, because wow, she really puts a, uh, incredible bow on this book, uh, to wrap things up in an exquisite manner. So I would say just stay tuned, uh, this program, all of the Blue Stye study sessions have opened with, uh, Thieves in the Night, most, or formerly Most Deaf, and Talib Kweli's, uh, song from the Black Star album, Marcus Garvey homage. Uh, and they made the hook of the song be concluding paragraph or concluding segment from this book. Uh, pay attention when it pops up, "And fantasy it was, for we were not strong." I'm not saying the whole thing, but you should just, your, uh, antenna should be up when you get to that segment. "And fantasy it was, for we were not strong, we were aggressive." When you hear that, really pay attention. You will get another segment where I think she just really breaks down, um, black victims of white supremacy and a lot of our responses to being traumatized, terrorized. This would be segment two. We'll be right back. I'll unmute everybody's line when the segment concludes, Toni Morrison's The Blue Stye.
Look, look, here comes a friend. The friend will play with Jane, they will play a good game. Play, Jane, play. How many times a minute are you going to look inside that old thing?
I didn't look in a long time.
You did too.
So what? I can look if I want to.
I didn't say you couldn't.
I just don't know why you have to look every minute. They aren't going anywhere. I know. I just like to look.
You scared they might go away?
Of course not, how can they go away?
The others went away.
They didn't go away, they changed.
Go away, change, what's the difference?
A lot.
Mr. Soaphead said they would last forever.
Forever and ever, amen?
Yes, if you want to know. You don't have to be so smarty when you talk to me.
I'm not being smarty, you started it.
I'd just like to do something besides watch you stare in that mirror.
You're just jealous.
I am not.
You are.
You wish you had them?
Ha!
What would I look like with blue eyes?
Nothing much.
If you're going to keep this up, I may as well go on off by myself.
No, don't go.
What do you want to do? We could go outside and play, I guess.
But it's too hot.
You can take your old mirror, put it in your coat pocket, and you could look at yourself up and down the street.
Boy, I never would've thought you'd be so jealous.
Oh, come on, you are.
Are what?
Jealous.
Okay, so I'm jealous.
See, I told you.
No, I told you.
Are they really nice?
Yes, very nice.
Just very nice?
Really, truly, very nice.
Really, truly, bluely nice?
Oh, God, you are crazy.
I am not.
I didn't mean it that way.
Well, what did you mean?
Come on, it's too hot in here.
Wait a minute, I can't find my shoes.
Here they are.
Oh, thank you.
Got your mirror?
Yes, dearie.
Well, let's go then.
Ow!
What's the matter?
The sun is too bright, it hurts my eyes.
Not mine.
I didn't even blink.
Look, I can look right at the sun.
Don't do that.
Why not, it doesn't hurt?
I don't even have to blink.
Well, blink anyway.
You make me feel funny staring at the sun like that.
Feel funny how?
I don't know.
Yes, you do feel funny how?
I told you, I don't know.
Why don't you look at me when you say that?
You're looking drop-eyed, like Mrs. Breedlove.
Mrs. Breedlove looked drop-eyed at you?
Yes, well, now she does, ever since I got my blue eyes.
She looks away from me all the time.
Do you suppose she's jealous too?
Could be. They are pretty, you know?
I know.
He really did a good job. Everybody's jealous. Every time I look at somebody, they look off.
Is that why nobody has told you how pretty they are?
Sure is. Can you imagine something that got happening to a person and nobody, but nobody says anything about it?
They all try to pretend they don't see them. Isn't that funny?
I said, isn't that funny?
Yes.
You are the only one who tells me how pretty they are.
Yes.
You are a real friend. I'm sorry about picking on you before. I mean, saying you were jealous and all, that's all right.
No, really. You are my very best friend.
Why didn't I know you before?
You didn't need me before.
Didn't need you?
I mean, you were so unhappy before.
I guess you didn't notice me before.
I guess you're right. And I was so lonely for friends.
And you were right here, right before my eyes.
No, honey, right after your eyes.
What?
What does Maureen think about your eyes?
She doesn't say anything about them.
Has she said anything to you about them?
No, nothing.
Do you like Maureen?
Oh, she's all right, for a half-white girl, that is.
I know what you mean.
But would you like to be her friend? I mean, would you like to go around with her or anything?
No, me neither.
But she sure is popular.
Who wants to be popular?
Not me.
Me neither.
But you couldn't be popular anyway. You didn't even go to school.
You don't either.
I know, but I used to.
What did you stop for?
They made me.
Who made you?
I don't know. After that first day at school when I had my blue eyes?
Well, the next day they had Mrs. Breedlove come out.
Now I don't go anymore, but I don't care.
You don't?
No, I don't. They're just prejudiced, that's all.
Yes, they sure are prejudiced.
Just because I got blue eyes, bluer than theirs, they're prejudiced.
That's right.
They are bluer, aren't they?
Oh, yes, much bluer.
Bluer than Joanna's?
Much bluer than Joanna's.
Bluer than Michelina's?
Much bluer than Michelina's.
I thought so.
Did Michelina say anything to you about my eyes?
No, nothing.
Did you say anything to her?
No.
How come?
How come what?
How come you don't talk to anybody?
I talk to you.
Besides me?
I don't like anybody besides you.
Where do you live?
I told you once.
What is your mother's name?
Why are you so busy meddling me?
I just wonder.
You don't talk to anybody? You don't go to school and nobody talks to you?
How do you know nobody talks to me?
They don't. When you're in the house with me, even Mrs. Breedlove doesn't say anything to you, ever.
Sometimes I wonder if she even sees you.
Why wouldn't she see me?
I don't know.
She almost walks right over you.
Maybe she doesn't feel too good since Charlie's gone.
Oh, yes, you might be right.
She probably misses him.
I don't know why she would. All he did was get drunk and beat her up.
Well, you know how grownups are.
Yeah.
No.
How are they?
Well, she probably loved him anyway.
Him?
Sure, why not? Anyway, if she didn't love him, she sure let him do it to her a lot.
That's nothing.
How do you know?
I saw them all the time. She didn't like it.
Then why'd she let him do it to her?
Because he made her.
How could somebody make you do something like that?
Easy.
Oh, yeah?
How easy?
They just make you, that's all.
I guess you're right.
And Charlie could make anybody do anything.
He could not.
He made you, didn't he?
Shut up!
I was only teasing.
Shut up!
Okay, okay.
He just tried, see? He didn't do anything. You hear me?
I'm shutting up.
You better.
I don't like that kinda talk.
I said I'm shutting up.
You always talk so dirty.
Who told you about that, anyway?
I forget.
Sammy?
No.
You did.
I did not.
You did.
You said he tried to do it to you when you were sleeping on the couch.
See there? You don't even know what you're talking about. It was when I was washing dishes.
Oh, yes, dishes.
By myself in the kitchen.
Well, I'm glad you didn't let him.
Yes.
Did you?
Did I what?
Let him.
Now who's crazy?
I am, I guess.
You sure are.
Still...
Well, go ahead, still what?
I wonder what it would be like.
Horrible.
Really?
Yes, horrible.
Then why didn't you tell Mrs. Breedlove?
I did tell her.
I don't mean about the first time. I mean about the second time, when you were sleeping on the couch.
I wasn't sleeping, I was reading.
Don't have to shout.
You don't understand anything, do you? She didn't even believe me when I told her.
So that's why you didn't tell her about the second time?
She wouldn't have believed me then either.
You're right. No use telling her when she wouldn't believe you.
That's what I'm trying to get through your thick head.
Okay, I understand now.
Just about. What do you mean, just about? You sure are mean today. You keep on saying mean and sneaky things. I thought you were my friend.
I am, I am.
Then leave me alone about Charlie.
Okay.
There's nothing more to say about him, anyway. He's gone, anyway.
Yes, good riddance.
Yes, good riddance.
And Sammy's gone too.
And Sammy's gone too.
So there's no use talking about it. I mean them.
No, no use at all.
It's all over now.
Yes.
And you don't have to be afraid of Charlie coming at you anymore.
No.
That was horrible, wasn't it?
Yes.
The second time too?
Yes.
Really? The second time too?
Leave me alone! You better leave me alone!
Can't you take a joke? I was only funning. I don't like to talk about dirty things.
Me neither.
Let's talk about something else.
What?
What will we talk about?
Why, your eyes?
Oh, yes, my eyes, my blue eyes.
Let me look again. See how pretty they are?
Yes.
They are prettier each time I look at them.
They are the prettiest I've ever seen.
Really?
Oh, yes.
Prettier than the sky?
Oh, yes.
Much prettier than the sky. Prettier than Alice and Jerry's storybook eyes?
Oh, yes.
Much prettier than Alice and Jerry's storybook eyes. And prettier than Joanna's?
Oh, yes.
And bluer, too. Bluer than Michelina's?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Of course I'm sure.
You don't sound sure.
Well, I am sure.
Unless... Unless what?
Oh, nothing. I was just thinking about a lady I saw yesterday. Her eyes sure were blue, but no, not bluer than yours.
Are you sure?
Yes, I remember them now. Yours are bluer.
I'm glad.
Me too. I'd hate to think there was anybody around with bluer eyes than yours.
I'm sure there isn't.
Not around here, anyway.
But you don't know, do you?
You haven't seen everybody, have you?
No, I haven't.
So there could be, couldn't there?
Not hardly.
But maybe, maybe you said around here. Nobody around here probably has bluer eyes. What about someplace else? Even if my eyes are bluer than Joanna's and bluer than Michelina's and bluer than the lady you saw, suppose there is somebody way off somewhere with bluer eyes than mine?
Don't be silly.
There could be, couldn't there?
Not hardly.
But suppose, suppose a long way off in Cincinnati, say, there is somebody whose eyes are bluer than mine. Suppose there are two people with bluer eyes?
So what?
You asked for blue eyes.
You got blue eyes.
He should've made them bluer.
Who?
Mr. Soaphead.
Did you say what color blue you wanted them?
No, I forgot.
Oh, well.
Look, look over there at that girl. Look at her eyes.
Are they bluer than mine?
No, I don't think so.
Did you look real good?
Yes.
Here comes someone. Look at his. See if they're bluer.
You're being silly. I'm not going to look at everybody's eyes.
You have to.
No, I don't.
Please.
If there is somebody with bluer eyes than mine, then maybe there is somebody with the bluest eyes, the bluest eyes in the whole world.
That's just too bad, isn't it?
Please help me look.
No.
But suppose my eyes aren't blue enough?
Blue enough for what?
Blue enough for... I don't know. Blue enough for something. Blue enough for you.
I'm not going to play with you anymore.
Oh, don't leave me.
Yes, I am.
Why, are you mad at me?
Yes.
Because my eyes aren't blue enough? Because I don't have the bluest eyes?
No, because you're acting silly.
Don't go, don't leave me. Will, will you come back if I get them?
Get what?
The bluest eyes. Will you come back then?
Of course I will. I'm just going away for a little while.
You promise?
Sure. I'll be back, right before your very eyes.
So it was. A little black girl yearns for the blue eyes of a little white girl. And the horror at the heart of her yearning is exceeded only by the evil of fulfillment. We saw her sometimes, Frida and I, after the baby came too soon and died. After the gossip and the slow wagging of heads. She was so sad to see. Grown people looked away. Children, those who were not frightened by her, laughed outright. The damage done was total. She spent her days, her tindral, sap-green days, walking up and down, up and down, her head jerking to the beat of a drummer so distant only she could hear. Elbows bent, arms on shoulders, she flailed her arms like a bird in an eternal grotesquely futile effort to fly, beating the air, a winged but grounded bird, intent on the blue void it could not reach, could not even see, but which filled the valleys of the mind. We tried to see her without looking at her and never, never went near. Not because she was absurd or repulsive or because we were frightened, but because we had failed her. Our flowers never grew. I was convinced that Frida was right, that I had planted them too deeply. How could I have been so sloven? So we avoided Pacola Breedlove forever. And the years folded up like pocket handkerchiefs. Sammy left town long ago. Charlie died in the workhouse. Mrs. Breedlove still does housework. And Pacola is somewhere in that little brown house she and her mother moved to on the edge of town, where you can see her even now, once in a while. The birdlike gestures are worn away to a mere picking and plucking her way between the tire rims and the sunflowers, between Coke bottles and milkweed, among all the waste and beauty of the world, which is what she herself was. All of our waste, which we dumped on her and which she absorbed, and all of our beauty, which was hers first and which she gave to us. All of us, all who knew her, felt so wholesome after we cleaned ourselves on her. We were so beautiful when we stood astride her ugliness. Her simplicity decorated us. Her guilt sanctified us. Her pain made us glow with health. Her awkwardness made us think we had a sense of humor. Her inarticulateness made us believe we were eloquent. Her poverty kept us generous. Even her waking dreams we used to silence our own nightmares. And she led us and thereby deserved our contempt. We honed our egos on her, patted our characters with her frailty, and yawned in the fantasy of our strength. And fantasy it was, for we were not strong, only aggressive. We were not free, merely licensed. We were not compassionate. We were polite, not good, but well-behaved. We courted death in order to call ourselves brave and hid like thieves from life. We substituted good grammar for intellect. We switched habits to simulate maturity. We rearranged lies and called it truth, seeing in the new pattern of an old idea the revelation and the word. She, however, stepped over into madness, a madness which protected her from us simply because it bored us in the end. Oh, some of us loved her, the maginal line. And Charlie loved her, I'm sure he did. He, at any rate, was the one who loved her enough to touch her, envelop her, give something of himself to her, but his touch was fatal. And the something he gave her filled the matrix of her agony with death. Love is never any better than the lover. Wicked people love wickedly. Violent people love violently. Weak people love weakly. Stupid people love stupidly. But the love of a free man is never safe. There is no gift for the beloved. The lover alone possesses his gift of love. The loved one is shorn, neutralized, frozen in the glare of the lover's inward eye. And now when I see her searching the garbage, for what? The thing we assassinated? I talk about how I did not plant the seeds too deeply, how it was the fault of the earth, the land of our town. I even think now that the land of the entire country was hostile to marigolds that year. This soil is bad for certain kinds of flowers. Certain seeds, it will not nurture. Certain fruit, it will not bear. And when the land kills of its own volition, we acquiesce and say the victim had no right to live. We are wrong, of course, but it doesn't matter. It's too late. At least on the edge of my town, among the garbage and the sunflowers of my town, it's much, much, much too late. Afterward. We had just started elementary school. She said she wanted blue eyes. I looked around to picture her with them and was violently repelled by what I imagined she would look like if she had her wish. The sorrow in her voice seemed to call for sympathy and I faked it for her, The sorrow in her voice seemed to call for sympathy, and I faked it for her, but astonished by the desecration she proposed, I got mad at her instead. Until that moment, I had seen the pretty, the lovely, the nice, the ugly, and although I had certainly used the word beautiful, I had never experienced its shock, the force of which was equaled by the knowledge that no one else recognized it, not even or especially the one who possessed it. It must have been more than the face I was examining, the silence of the street in the early afternoon, the light, the atmosphere of confession. In any case, it was the first time I knew beautiful, had imagined it for myself. Beauty was not simply something to behold, it was something one could do. The bluest eye was my effort to say something about that, to say something about why she had not or possibly ever would have the experience of what she possessed, and also why she prayed for so radical an alteration. Implicit in her desire was racial self-loathing. And twenty years later, I was still wondering about how one learns that. Who told her? Who made her feel that it was better to be a freak than what she was? Who had looked at her and found her so wanting, so small a weight on the beauty scale? The novel pecks away at the gaze that condemned her. The reclamation of racial beauty in the sixties stirred these thoughts, made me think about the necessity for the claim. Why, although reviled by others, could this beauty not be taken for granted within the community? Why did it need wide public articulation to exist? These are not clever questions, but in nineteen sixty-two, when I began this story, and in nineteen sixty-five, when it began to be a book, the answers were not as obvious to me as they quickly became and are now. The assertion of racial beauty was not a reaction to the self-mocking humorous critique of cultural racial foibles common in all groups, but against the damaging internalization of assumptions of immutable inferiority originating in an outside gaze. I focused therefore on how something as grotesque as the demonization of an entire race could take root inside the most delicate member of society, a child, the most vulnerable member, a female. In trying to dramatize the devastation that even casual racial contempt can cause, I chose a unique situation, not a representative one. The extremity of Pacola's case stemmed largely from a crippled and crippling family, unlike the average black family and unlike the narrators. But singular as Pacola's life was, I believed some aspects of her woundability were lodged in all young girls. In exploring the social and domestic aggression that could cause a child to literally fall apart, I mounted a series of rejections, some routine, some exceptional, some monstrous, all the while trying hard to avoid complicity in the demonization process Pacola was subjected to. That is, I did not want to dehumanize the characters who trashed Pacola and contributed to her collapse. One problem was centering. The weight of the novel's inquiry on so delicate and vulnerable a character could smash her and lead the readers into the comfort of pitying her rather than into an interrogation of themselves for the smashing. My solution, break the narrative into parts that had to be reassembled by the reader, seemed to me a good idea, the execution of which does not satisfy me now. Besides, it didn't work. Many readers remained touched but not moved. The other problem, of course, was language. Holding the despising glance while sabotaging it was difficult. The novel tried to hit the raw nerve of racial self-contempt, expose it, then soothe it, not with narcotics, but with language that replicated the agency I discovered in my first experience of beauty. Because that moment was so racially infused, my revulsion at what my school friend wanted, very blue eyes and a very black skin, the harm she was doing to my concept of the beautiful, the struggle was for writing that was indisputably black. I don't yet know quite what that is, but neither that nor the attempts to disqualify an effort to find out keeps me from trying to pursue it. Some time ago, I did the best job I could of describing strategies for grounding my work in race-specific yet race-free prose, prose free of racial hierarchy and triumphalism. Parts of that description are as follows. The opening phrase of the first sentence, quiet as it's kept, had several attractions for me. First, it was a familiar phrase, familiar to me as a child listening to adults, to black women conversing with one another, telling a story, an anecdote, gossip about someone or event within the circle, the family, the neighborhood. The words are conspiratorial. Shh, don't tell anyone else, and no one is allowed to know this. It is a secret between us, a secret that is being kept from us. The conspiracy is both held and withheld, exposed and sustained. In some sense, it was precisely what the act of writing the book was, the public exposure of a private confidence. In order to comprehend fully the duality of that position, one needs to be reminded of the political climate in which the writing took place, nineteen sixty-five to sixty-nine, a time of great social upheaval in the lives of black people. The publication, as opposed to the writing, involved the exposure. The writing was disclosure of secrets, secrets we shared, and those withheld from us by ourselves and by the world outside the community. Quiet as it's kept is also a figure of speech that is written in this instance, but clearly chosen for how speakerly it is, how it speaks and bespeaks a particular world and its ambience. Further, in addition to its back-fence connotation, its suggestion of illicit gossip of thrilling revelation, there is also in the whisper, the assumption on the part of the reader, that the teller is on the inside, knows something others do not, and is going to be generous with this privileged information. The intimacy I was aiming for, the intimacy between the reader and the page, could start up immediately because the secret is being shared at best, an eavesdropped upon at the least. Sudden familiarity or instant intimacy seemed crucial to me. I didn't want the reader to have time to wonder, what do I have to do to give up in order to read this? What defense do I need? What distance maintain? Because I know, and the reader does not, he or she has to wait for the second sentence, that this is a terrible story about things one would rather not know anything about. What then is the big secret about to be shared? The thing we, reader and I, are in on? A botanical aberration? Pollution perhaps? A skip perhaps in the natural order of things? A September and autumn, a fall without marigolds? Bright, common, strong, and sturdy marigolds. When? In nineteen forty-one. And since that is a momentous year, the beginning of World War II for the United States, the fall of nineteen forty-one, just before the declaration of war, has a closet innuendo. In the temperate zone where there is a season known as fall, during which one expects marigolds to be at their peak, in the months before the beginning of U.S. participation in World War II, something grim is about to be divulged. The next sentence will make it clear that the sayer, the one who knows, is a child speaking, mimicking the adult black women on the porch or in the backyard. The opening phrase is an effort to be grown up about this shocking information. The point of view of a child alters the priority an adult would assign the information. We thought it was because Pacola was having her father's baby that the marigolds did not grow, foregrounds the flowers, backgrounds illicit traumatic incomprehensible sex coming to its dreaded fruition. This foregrounding of trivial information and backgrounding of shocking knowledge secures the point of view, but gives the reader pause about whether the voice of a child can be trusted at all or is more trustworthy than an adult's. The readers thereby protected from a confrontation too soon with the painful details, while simultaneously provoked into a desire to know them. The novelty, I thought, would be in having this story of female violation revealed from the vantage point of the victims or could-be victims of rape, the persons no one inquired of, certainly not in nineteen sixty-five, the girls themselves. And since the victim does not have the vocabulary to understand the violence or its context, gullible, vulnerable girlfriends, looking back as the knowing adults they pretended to be in the beginning would have to do that for her, and would have to fill those silences with their own reflective lives. Thus, the opening provides the stroke that announces something more than a secret shared, but a silence broken, a void filled, an unspeakable thing spoken at last. And it draws the connection between a minor destabilization in seasonal flora and the insignificant destruction of a black girl. Of course, minor and insignificant represent the outside world's view. For the girls, both phenomena are earth-shaking depositories of information they spend that whole year of childhood and afterward trying to fathom and cannot. If they have any success, it will be in transferring the problem of fathoming to the presumably adult reader to the inner circle of listeners. At the least, they have distributed the weight of these problematical questions to a larger constituency and justified the public exposure of a privacy. If the conspiracy that the opening words announce is entered into by the reader, then the book can be seen to open with its close, a speculation on the disruption of nature as being a social disruption with tragic individual consequences in which the reader as part of the population of the text is implicated. However, a problem lies in the central chamber of the novel. The shattered world I built to complement what is happening to Pacola, its pieces held together by seasons in childtime and commenting at every turn on the incompatible and barren white family Primer, does not in its present form handle effectively the silence at its center, the void that is Pacola's unbeing. It should have had a shape like the emptiness left by a boom or a cry. It required a sophistication unavailable to me and some deft manipulation of the voices around her. She is not seen by herself until she hallucinates a self, and the fact of her hallucination becomes a kind of outside-the-book conversation. Also, although I was pressing for a female expressiveness, it eluded me for the most part, and I had to content myself with female persona because I was not able to secure throughout the work the feminine subtext that is present in the opening sentence, the women gossiping, eager and aghast in, quiet as it's kept. The shambles this struggle became is more evident in the section on Pauline Breedlove, where I resorted to two voices, hers and the urging narrator's, both of which are extremely unsatisfactory to me. It is interesting to me now that where I thought I would have the most difficulty subverting the language to a feminine mode, I had the least, connecting Charlie's rape by the white men to his own of his daughter. This most masculine act of aggression becomes feminized in my language, passive, and I think more accurately repellent when deprived of the male glamour of shame rape is or once was routinely given. My choices of language, speakerly, oral, colloquial, my reliance for full comprehension on codes embedded in black culture, my effort to affect immediate co-conspiracy and intimacy without any distancing explanatory fabric, as well as my attempt to shape a silence while breaking it, are attempts to transfigure the complexity and wealth of black American culture into a language worthy of the culture. Thinking back now on the problems expressive language presented to me, I am amazed by their currency, their tenacity. Hearing civilized languages debase humans, watching cultural exorcisms debase literature, seeing oneself preserved in the amber of disqualifying metaphors, I can say that my narrative project is as difficult today as it was thirty years ago. With few exceptions, the initial publication of The Bluest Eye was like Pacola's life, dismissed, trivialized, misread. And it has taken twenty-five years to gain for her the respectful publication this edition is. Princeton, New Jersey, November nineteen ninety-three. The End. You've been listening to The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison, narrated by Lynn Thigpen. If you've enjoyed this book and this performance, Recorded Books is pleased to offer many of the books of Toni Morrison, all narrated by Lynn Thigpen. You'll find a wide selection of titles in the Recorded Books catalog, including bestsellers, mysteries, classics, histories, and more. So to order another recorded book or for a copy of our latest listing, please call us using the toll-free number found on the back of the book. You can order by phone with any major credit card, or by writing to us, or by faxing us. Don't forget to ask about easy thirty-day rentals by mail. On our website, you can browse the catalog, hear about the latest releases, place orders, or tune into narrator profiles and author interviews. So visit us there at www-recordedbooks.com. And thank you for being a Recorded Books reader.
Context of White Supremacy. While we... I'll hit the phone lines. I'll give out the number again in case folks want to dial in to share any thoughts they might have on the conclusion of The Bluest Eye. The number again is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six. And the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you dial that line and you have questions. If you're on the Talk Shoe line, it would be star eight. One of the listeners in the chat room reminded me, no coincidence, the program immediately preceding this broadcast, A Black Male by A. McNeil and his book, Hi, My Name Is Loco and I Am a Racist, where he opens that book talking about how his self-esteem has been sodomized, being a black male in Japan for the last eight years. Two thousand twelve, Bluest Eye still very relevant in my opinion. The folks who dialed in before, who had a hand up, your lines are all open. Anybody else, I'll be on the lookout. So Minnie B. should be with us. Bruce Fine, call her at three three five eight, three five nine zero, and nine three two five. Your lines are all open.
Can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, ma'am, maybe I'm mistaken, but it seems like the parts tonight and maybe the last part, last Friday, seems like they were rife with the pedophilia aspect. Excuse me. I'm wondering if any, if there was a reasoning for that, or is this she decided to wait until, I guess, almost the end of the book to bring that in? Or maybe I'm mistaken. I was just wondering if anyone else noticed that.
I think it's a big part of the climax, being more detailed about it, but I know Soaphead Church is a reference very early in the book. I think when Mister Henry, when he molests, I'm forgetting either Frida or Claudia, they already bring up that Soaphead Church. It seems the children, they know that he's a pedophile, and so you already get some foreshadowing about him and what he's about. And then you also, you have that incident with Mister Henry doing it. So I think the pedophilia is there. It's unfortunately, I think it's there. I think it just becomes greatly amplified at the end of the book. And I think she just, as she said, you know, it's on the front page or I think it's in the first couple pages of the book where they say, you know, Pacola's father had sex with her and got her pregnant. So I think it's kind of there. It just becomes more explicit in going into the details about everything in the last, I think, the last two weeks that we've been discussing it.
Okay.
Hello, can I be heard?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, what stood out to me in this past session just played is when she was, when, I don't know, it might have been Toni Morrison, when she was saying, oh, no. Well, there was a line in there where she said, all of our waste were washed and dumped on her. I guess they were talking about Pacola and how they were saying how they felt like prettier when they were sitting next they felt like prettier when they were sitting next to her ugliness and how they felt smarter because she wasn't as articulate as they were, you know, and I think that stood out to me and just made me, um, think about how, um, it almost seemed like they used her as a, um, um, you know how, I, I, I don't know, I think it was the last session when, when she was saying, um, "How come I didn't notice you before?" And she was saying, "Well, because you didn't need me." And, and I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that everybody used Pacola as, as a, uh, as a way to feel, you know, to vent out their frustration, their anger and their, and also their aggression. And, um, it was, it was very, um, the way that, um, um, Toni Morrison, uh, wrote it, it was, it was very, it was very masterfully done, you know, and how every, everyone sort of like, um, um, more or less were, um, somehow, um, were somehow like, not related, but like somehow were, um, Pacola was like a part of, you know, of everybody's, you know, either, uh, 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 you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet because I, I need to gather my thoughts, but those were the things that stood out to me. That's all I have to say.
If I'm understanding, it seems like the caller is saying that Pacola seems to have been the target for everyone's anti-black aggression, um, and I, and if that's true, I think it goes to that, the name again, the Pepsi, Coca-Cola dark, um, that she just, she received so much, um, abuse, physical, verbal, emotional, and psych, and ultimately, you know, psychological.
Yeah, it's, it's just like she, she was like that dumping ground, you know what I'm saying? Like where everybody dumped everything, you know, that, everything that they didn't like about themselves or, or any kind of, you know, uh, problems that they were going through. Like they dumped it all on her and she was just a little kid, you know what I'm saying? Uh, um, yeah, it was just, it was almost, almost unbearable to, uh, you know, to, um, uh, listen, listen to it, you know, but, um, yeah, another great selection of, of, um, of books, uh, Gus. That's all I have to say.
And I think also just like, uh, uh, Loco, what is his name, Gus McNeil?
Baye McNeil.
Baye McNeil, um, how the one Japanese lady, um, was able to come in and soothe his pain. Um, it just, it just took one, I'm thinking with Pacola, um, I'm thinking of one white person had come in and told her she was beautiful. That would have nullified and voided out probably every, everything that had been done or said to her by, uh, black people. Uh, I think of, uh, the gymnast Gabrielle Douglas and, um, uh, from what being told to us by the media, a couple of, uh, black people said something about her hair and then you have white people come in and, "Oh, God, how could they say that? She's, she's so beautiful. Where would they get that, you know, where would they get that from? Why are they treating her like that?" And, you know, and, and I often think they cause us to hate ourselves and then when we demonstrate our self-hatred that they put in us, then they come along and pretend to not know where this came from, why are we acting this way, blaming it on us, just like I hear white people say, "I wonder why black people live by this one-drop rule. Why do they do that?" And, you know, it's like they come in and do this thing, this is Bill Maher says, "No, we've changed our mind, uh, we're gonna say that the one-drop and we all messed up behind it." And then they move on and pretend like they, they have no idea why we are acting this way. It's amazing. And then they come in and give, as that guy said, the soothing lotion.
Can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
I would like to pose another question to the callers concerning Pacola. Can anybody describe how Pacola looked? Because, uh, her perception of herself was ugly and what most everyone else, the other characters in the book said that she was ugly, but, you know, what was that in the eye of the beholder? Uh, we didn't get a real description of how Pacola looked. She may not have been ugly, just maybe, you know, a dark, complexed young child. Because the reason why I say this is, I don't know what edition that I have of the book, but my book is purple with a little girl on the front with a hat. And to me, that little girl is not ugly. So I don't know if that's supposed to be Pacola or not, but I was just wondering if anyone else, you know, came up with that conclusion because we didn't get a description of Pacola, it's just what other people perceived her to be. And, you know, like I say, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so we would just have to assume that, you know, she was ugly. And in that particular, uh, time, then the darker-skinned individual would not have represented, uh, uh, beauty.
Yeah.
And I think that would have been a misnomer.
You, you said just what I was getting ready to say, the fact that she was, if, you know, she was dark-skinned, that was enough back then, I guess, for her to be labeled as ugly. I, I think if I'm remembering correctly, Sophead called her pitifully ugly. So if, even if she was not ugly, to constantly be called ugly, I think you will automatically think, "There is something wrong with me. Everyone is calling me ugly." You know? Is this like the society will say, you know, "Black women, if they're not a size three,
Exactly. I was, I think that my phone comments, I think that the community represent, is, is sort of a, a microcosm of the world or the black community, you know, and then the characters represent the way that different black people respond to racism or white supremacy. And also, I wanted someone to comment on the, and see if I'm on the right track as for internalized racism and, uh, institutionalized racism. And if someone can explain to me the difference.
We have a little less than fifteen minutes left, so the other folks that are on the line, I don't want to be waiting till the last minute and then everybody deciding they want to speak, so all the other people that are on the line, uh, feel free to share while Um, see, so is it that nobody has any comments or any response to, uh, the male caller's question? Um, see, so that would be Minnie B., uh, three three five eight, three five nine oh, and I'm assuming that might have been the male that called.
Could you place that question again? Which, which question was it? I thought she already asked, was the girl ugly or was that the girl on the, on the cover? Is that what the question was?
I thought he had a follow-up, the male caller, are you still with us, sir? Not hearing you, don't know if he, this is me line, I thought he was still, uh, still on the line.
Can I be heard?
Okay, we can, yes, sir.
Okay, the, I was saying that it seemed like the community was a microcosm of the collective, uh, black community and that there were, was a correlation between internalized racism and institutionalized racism. And if someone could speak on that and about the difference in the two and if they saw the same thing in the novel.
I would have to reflect on that a little bit more. Uh, yeah, um, that internalized racism, hmm. Is that, is that like, um, extending your own hatred upon another person? Because of their, the darker, because they're darker skinned? Is that what you're, when you say internalized racism?
Uh, the way racism, uh, affected you or the individual person, um, individual, you know, how you, you know, some people, in other words, if, if they experienced racism and, uh, like, in, in other words, Pacola, the people saying that she was ugly and then she internalized the fact that she was ugly so that by having blue eyes then would make her more attractive. So, and that, that aspect, then maybe, you know, we as black people collectively in the United States of America, so-called, you know, internalize these perceptions, you know, that we're given of ourselves. So I may be incorrect.
Well, I-
Because what I, go ahead.
My, 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 my words?
Yes.
Yes. I was gonna say that, well, that's what the, uh, Pam, the Trojan Horse in the Beauty Con game is all about, you know, that, uh, that black people in America are bombarded with messages, we give it to ourselves about, you know, our, our hair's not right, our armpits stink, our nails aren't, uh, long enough, uh, you know, there's just nothing right about blackness and I think that when Toni Morrison wrote this in nineteen sixty-two, is that correct?
Uh, I think it was published in nineteen seventy, although she said she had been working on it for some years before that.
Right, but that, nineteen sixty-two was, in that era was when Madison Avenue and the orchestrated, um, commercialization of, and packaging of what is beautiful and who is beautiful and who isn't and who's invisible.
I think that she wanted to be-
Pardon?
I think she was working to be visible to people and she probably thought, uh, her blue eyes would bring her visible, uh, make her visible. Um, but she was so wrapped up in her own self of trying to be visible to people that she didn't see her so-called friend. And I'm, I'm still kind of stuck on that part where her friend was questioning her about the, her, uh, sex, this sexual encounter as though she had become promiscuous. Or, or that she had some fantasies of her own. Uh, but I don't know, I, I gotta listen to it again to, I'm, I'm kind of a nigger and I, I need to listen like three or four times to get it sometimes, so.
You did not seem kind of a nigger, did you?
Yes, I am kind of a, I'm kind of hard-headed and sometimes I don't get through the first time, so I gotta really listen sometimes.
I was thinking of, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm reminded of a guest that Gus had some time ago on the program, an Asian doctor, and I think he's a plastic surgeon, and if I'm recalling the interview, he spoke of how so many Asian people come in to have their eyes what they would call Europeanized or Westernized. And how his father, all he wanted to do is get to America and get and live around white people, and I think the doctor said that he didn't, when he was in college, he didn't want to be around his own people. He wanted, he wanted to be around white people and I think he ended up marrying a white woman. I, I think I read that Asian-American men, not black men, are the, uh, ones who, um, number wise, who marry, uh, white women more than any other, uh, quote-unquote minority. Um, like with Gus's definition of racism, white supremacy, it is a worldwide, global system that is geared towards harming, abusing any and everyone whom they don't consider white. And that is, and, and it is making everyone who they don't consider white feel that there is something wrong with them, that they are not quite right. Not like I think the Asian community are right up there with the black community with the bleaching cream. You know, this, this thing is in all of our heads and I wish sometimes- You know, this, this thing is in all of our heads, and I wish sometimes that we would see that, 'cause sometimes I think we, we speak as if black people are reacting strangely, uniquely, distinctively, from every other people of color, and-
Mm.
It, 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 our reaction is a quote-unquote normal reaction that everybody who has been subjugated, abused, marginalized, and told that if you are not white, there is something wrong with you from head to toe. And everybody is bleaching, blonding their hair, looking, I, I happened to see, um, a little bit of the Olympics today, and they had, I think it was Korea, the soccer team, Korea aga- versus, uh, Japan, I think, and, uh, a lot of the guys had blonde hair. The Korea, I think one of them, the Asian, you know, had blonde hair. It is, it is a, a system that is anti-color, anti-not-white. And I think we are reacting like any other victim of racism, the global system of racism, white supremacy. We want, they wanted blue eyes, the Asians want non-flanted eyes, you know?
But the difference is, is that the Asians who have, they, who have their eyes, uh, their eyes opened or widened, or, uh, Westernized, is that they have, have been able to, um, achieve some success in doing it. That they, in their own, in their own communities, that they have achieved some, some success in do- in behaving like that, or else why would they do it?
Right, but it's, I mean, it's, I mean, we may call it success, but it's, it's at the, the price of, um, erasing yourself, and, and making yourself more white, and, and, I mean, that's what victims do. They don't, they don't want this abuse, they don't want, so, you know, now, there are Asians who don't do it, you know?
Are you, are you saying that there are Asians who, uh, who don't get their eyes widened are, are being abused, the Japanese people who, who don't get their eyes widened are being abused?
I, I, I think we're all, uh, a, a victim of, uh, racist abuse.
Mm.
I think, I think, I'm just saying, I think some respond, and, and we respond in various manners, but, I'm sorry, go ahead, Gus.
Uh, Triumph Three Thousand joined the line, uh, did you have something you wanted to get in as well?
Uh, yeah, I had just, I wanted to chime in on, um, the other caller's question, being, uh, when I walked away from this story, uh, feeling like, um, I do, I do feel like the word "microcosm" is a good word to use, I guess, I felt like it wasn't the community that was necessarily, for me, it wasn't the community that was a microcosm, I think that the, the character of Pacola herself is a microcosm for, um, what takes place with us as a community, and then when you step outside of Pacola, the other various characters that are abusing and, um, basically taking their frustrations out on Pacola, I think that they're, they're almost metaphorically, I think that they, they can be used as metaphors for white supremacy. I think on another, it was another broadcast where we were talking about the, uh, the little boy who had, you know, tricked her into the house, and it came off to me like metaphorically in that moment, that little boy sort of took on a role of what white supremacy does, like how it operates, and I think that each character that abuses Pacola is almost metaphorically like, um, they take on the role or the persona of the white supremacist, but at the same time, I think it's also symbolic with, with what the caller was asking, I think that it's also symbolic of, um, the effects of internalizing racist think or racist thought. So, I mean, I think that the, the way that the book unfolds, the way that the story is told, I think that Toni Morrison, I mean, I can't tell if she's doing this on purpose, if it was purposeful or if it wasn't, but I think that it's ingenious, the way that you can use these various terminologies, and it fits either way.
Uh, we are at the three-hour mark, anybody, uh, any of the folks that are on the line who hadn't shared anything, or had a, uh, final word that they wanted to get in on, uh, Toni Morrison's The Bluest Eye?
Oh, can I also say that I meant to mention that, uh, the, the person narrating the story, Lynn Bigpen, I think that she did an excellent job. I listened to, um, I listened to the Tar Baby audiobook as well, I think she's narrating that, and I think that her, I mean, it really brought the light, you know, the benefits of having like a professional actress step into these various roles and read the book. I mean, I think she did an excellent job, I mean, I know that she's passed on, but I just wanted to mention that.
I, I agree, I al- always thought it was Toni, uh, narrating, it was excellent.
I loved it too.
And I wanted to ask Gus if he's, uh, if he read Tar Baby, and if he's listened to that audiobook. I've just, I mean, I'm just now getting familiar with Toni Morrison, but I just listened to Tar Baby, and, I mean, it was some profound moment of dialogue in that book that reminded me of Neely Fuller, it reminded me of the cows, it reminded me of codification, it just, that was interesting, I just wondered if Gus had, uh, read that.
I have not, I have not, I don't think I've heard anybody even mumble a word about that book since, uh, since I was in school, but I haven't read it, no.
Well, Lynn Bigpen, Lynn Bigpen is narrating that as well on the audiobook version, and I mean, you talking about, um, it, it's just so interesting, because it's a, it's a character in, in that story that I feel like has his, you know, he has his own brand of codification, and I mean, it is, it, it's some prof- it's some profound moment that's just gonna make you definitely think of Neely Fuller, I mean, I think it's even one period and point in time where he says blatantly, uh, black people are not supposed to do personal things with white people. Sit down and have, eat, have sex, have co- I mean, it was, it, it's interesting, I think you would enjoy it. If you do get a chance to check it out, let me know what you think.
Wow, that is fascinating. I will, um, I will make an effort to see if I can get my hands on, uh, the audiobook, um, yeah, I will do that. If it's Toni Morrison, it shouldn't be too difficult to find, she's pretty, she's pretty popular, so, yeah, I'll make a, make an effort to see if I can get my hands on it.
And let me know, I could send it to you, I have it.
Oh, right on, I will let you know if I have any difficulties finding it.
I was just gonna say that, um, this, uh, that I am reminded of Oprah Winfrey, and when Oprah Winfrey talks about her life story, and if any women who, or anybody who has sort of followed or been an Oprah fan all the years, uh, that she talked about her life and that, and she talks about being a, a ugly child until a white teacher, it was a white teacher that called her a pretty little girl, that, uh, turned her around, and, uh, and, and the close of the story, that's what, um, really did remind me of Oprah Winfrey's life that she's been willing to talk about in public.
Hmm. Uh, just what I said a few moments ago, if, if a white person had told Pacola she was beautiful, it would have wiped out, probably wiped out every negative thing that, you know, that was said to her by, um, black people.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or I, I think also a non-white, non-black people, person, uh, I think they have a lot of, uh, influence on us as well.
Hmm.
Yes, are you going to, um, are you gonna, are, are you gonna discuss the next, um, next read, or next read?
Can you say that one more time?
Were you going to discuss the next, um, selection, reading selection?
Um, we can, we can vote, um, I had three books that, uh, I thought would be cool to kinda look at next, we could pick from those three, I guess Tar Baby, we can, Toni Morrison theme, we can add that to the mix as well, um, Two Thousand Seasons, just because that's also in my top five list of books that I've read all time, and other people have also suggested that we do Two Thousand Seasons, although that means a lot less now, because people suggested that we do Yorugu, and then, I feel like a lot of people who suggested it did not participate, or at least they didn't actively keep up with the reading so that they could participate, uh, with that one, but I know Two Thousand Seasons is one, but that is a difficult book, I'll just, you know, make sure I'm truthful about that, difficult book, I don't have an audiobook to that, so that's when we would have to read and, and call in to, uh, you know, dialogue about, um, Turner Diaries, William Pierce, uh, white man suspected racist, as I said, Timothy McVeigh was giving these books away, uh, many overtly racist white people love this book, um, it is kind of a depiction of things becoming chaotic in the system of white supremacy, it's a little longer, but I have the audiobook of this, so this is another one where you could, you know, we could just tune in, same way we did with The Bluest Eye, um, uh, I don't want to mispronounce the first name, Achibe, who did Things Fall Apart, he also did another book talking about black people going through the British ed- uh, education system, um, female listener recommended it, I got that on audiobook as well, uh, so those were the four that I was thinking, uh, we could kinda vote, people can be thinking, uh, which one they would like to go next, I have that on audi- the only one I don't have an audiobook to is Two Thousand Seasons, so that's the only one that, you know, we would have to do the reading and then chime in and participate and what have you, and actually prepare for the program, the others I have audiobooks for, so we could just tune in and listen and comment as we go, same way we did with Toni Morrison, so, if you all have opinions, I know Bruce Fines, she gave her vote for Turner Diaries, uh, if you all have a vote, what you would like to, to do next, let me know, although I will say, even if the votes piled up for Two Thousand Seasons, I would have an incredulous eye, just 'cause I'd be thinking, that's another one, people would start reading and go, oh, man, this is a tough read, uh, this is not, you know, the easiest thing for me to come home after a tough day on the plantation and try to get into, uh, this book, it is, it is fasc- I will, it's on my top five, one of the best books I've ever read, and I would say for anyone struggling with that white chip in religion, white Jesus, it is, when I read that book the first time, it was like someone taking the Bible and stomping on it with muddy boots, uh, just, ah, get that out of there, you don't need that if you're a black person, um, but it's not an easy read, it's not an easy read.
Yeah. I, I have a quick question about, uh, the passage, um, that was, uh, that you prayed, um, uh, Toni Morrison, when she was, um, um, you know, doing the outro, she said, love, I think she said lover is, the lover is never better than the love, or love is never better than the lover, I'm not sure which one, which order it was, what, wh- what, what did she mean by that, I, I didn't quite understand, and she also said that wicked people, uh, love wickedly, and, and, I don't know, it, it kinda seemed like she was kinda like, uh, all over the place with that, I don't know.
Let's see, I'll see if I can pull up the, uh, passage here so we can all hear it, um, this is what I mean, people wait till we get to the end of the program and then decide they have a lot of questions and things that they want to chat about, um, let's see, uh, oh, I did want to get in, 'cause it seemed like there was some confusion, um, that conversation that Pacola is having, uh, towards the end, with the other female, about her blue eyes, and you're not gonna leave, and, and you don't think there's anybody with blue eyes, she is talking to herself, that is her make-believe friend, so she is not talking to another, that's why I was saying in the chatroom, like, this is hard to listen to, like, just hearing how a victim has just wandered off into, you know, in San Loco in Japan, I was saying, this is hard to listen to, and the listener was saying, oh, I think it's funny, and I was like, well, she's not really talking, and I was thinking some people probably are not getting that she's talking to herself, uh, so, yeah, maybe-
Yeah, that's where my confusion was at.
Okay, yeah.
Wait a minute.
Maybe, uh-
That cleared up a lot of stuff for me.
Yeah, maybe give another listen and just keep that in mind when you get to that part, she is talking to herself, this is a make-believe friend, even the line where she says, uh, how come you weren't here before, and I think she says something to the effect of, you didn't need me before, um, kinda clueing you in.
Yeah.
Uh, anyhow, all right, so, let's see, I'll see if I can get the line where she's talking about the, okay, this is at the end here, uh, "Some of us love Pacola, the Magino line, Magino line, uh, and Kali loved her, I'm sure he did, he at any rate was the one who loved her enough to touch her, envelop her, give something of himself to her, but his touch was fatal, and the something he gave her filled the matrix of her agony with death. Love is never any better than the lover. Wicked people love wickedly. Violent people love violently. Weak people love weakly. Stupid people love stupidly. But the love of a free man is never safe. There is no gift for the beloved. The lover alone possesses his gift of love. The loved one is shorn, neutralized, frozen in the glare of the lover's inward eye." Um, I, well, I won't say I think, uh, at least when I read it, the part where she's talking about how people love, uh, and to the degree that they've been damaged, that'll be reflected in the way that they reach out to care for other people or attempt to reach out to other people, um, I think when people, the kinda, it's almost a cliche now, hurt people, hurt people, that's what it makes me think of, if you've been damaged in some way, that's gonna be reflected in the way that you extend yourself to other people. Um, and I think as she goes on, I think that word "free," uh, she spent a considerable, well, I won't say a considerable, but I thought it was a significant passage, I think last week, I might be wrong, maybe it was two weeks ago, but I think it was last week, when she was talking about, uh, Charlie Vreba, Pacola's father, and saying that he was a dangerous man because he was free, uh, and she talked about how he had killed three white people, and he had done this, and, you know, he could, he could do whatever at this point, it was, I think, kinda when she was giving more background around him going in to, to rape his daughter, and in my view, it's that term "free," what do we talk about when we say "free," uh, when she says, uh, but the love of a free man is never safe, what do we mean when we say "free," especially in this context, uh, in terms of why the love of a free person was, I'm thinking Charlie is the last person that we talked about being a free person, uh, and the love that Charlie Vreba gave not being safe, and he himself being a dangerous person, um, also, it, it makes me, this whole passage here, there's no gift for the beloved, the lover alone possesses his gift of love, where this, what we're calling love here, that's another word that gets thrown around, love and free, um, where it's not really anything that is going to be of benefit, uh, to the person that is quote-unquote "love," the person who's getting anything out of this is gonna be the, the lover, not the- The person who's getting anything out of this is gonna be the, the lover, not the target of this quote unquote love. And I think that plays out frequently uh, for black people especially, uh, under racism, white supremacy, where a person will do something really, really bad, I'd say, well, I did it because I loved you. Uh, thinking it, it, for me, it all goes to being in this really sick warped environment where you're not really able to love. You're not really able to be, you're not able to express it correctly. You're not able to be quote unquote free. So, all of these feelings, all of these emotions just get warped. Uh, and it just becomes damaged. Exactly what she said. Wicked people love wickedly. When you've been damaged by racism, white supremacy, that's frequently gonna be manifested in the way that you reach out to other people. And I think that's, to me, that makes sense 'cause this is at the conclusion of the book and I think that's what she's evidenced throughout the book. Victims of racism, reaching out to other victims in a really damaged and perverted way. Uh, even people that they say that they love quote unquote, or say that they have some feelings for, and maybe they do. I think she even says that. I think uh, Charlie Bree Love did love Pacola, but his love is only expressed in a really wicked and perverse way because he too has been so damaged. He rapes his daughter. He's been raped. She said that in the afterward, the incident with the flashlight. She describes it as a rape. I think we talked about that last week. He's been raped. That's the only way that he can reach out, by raping someone. That's how he expresses or attempts to express some sort of affection. Uh, even uh, Pauline and Colly fighting their whole relationship. They'll be in bed for a little while and, and can't even express that tenderness and that I need your touch, but they have no problem fighting. Even it seems look forward to their brawls and fighting with one another and the children getting involved. That's uh, yeah, I feel like I'm being a little long-winded. That's what it seems to, to be conveying to me, if that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, feel free. I don't wanna spend, we're in overtime, so if it doesn't make sense, if somebody else, you know, has a different interpretation and you can state it briefly, feel free.
Nah, nah, it makes sense. Uh, thank you for clarin- uh, clarifying that up. I, I guess when she, when I was listening to the passage, I might, I might have missed uh, a few uh, uh, one in the sentence and that's probably why I was, you know, thinking she was all over the place, but yeah, it makes sense. Thank you.
Uh, we'll bring it up tomorrow about the uh, the next book. If we're doing Two Thousand Seasons, I assume that would be something we would need to decide on pretty quick. Um, today, tomorrow, you all can leave a note. You can email me or leave a note on Facebook or we, we maybe can come to a conclusion about it tomorrow uh, for the compensatory call-in, which books we will do next. Uh, if it's Two Thousand Seasons, I would assume people would need to get a book and get cracking. Uh, if we're gonna do that one and be ready for next Friday. Uh, if we're doing one of the audiobooks, then that would be less prep time. We just have to show up and be prepared to roll whichever book we're gonna choose, but think on it. Bruce Fine has already uh, confirmed her vote for Turner Diaries. Uh, other folks can uh, let me know which one they would prefer to do. Tar, but we can throw Tar Baby in the mix as well. Um, I'll get, see if I get the audiobook, so we'll have three audiobooks to pick from and one hard copy book to pick from uh, for our next selection, but we'll be doing something next Friday, white people permitting. Um, before we uh, wrap things up, I also wanted to make sure, uh, I actually wanted to make sure uh, oh, we have two votes for Turner Diaries. I hadn't looked at the chatroom. So, there are two votes for Turner Diaries, two votes for Turner Diaries. Um-
There's three votes for Turner Diaries.
Three votes, uh-oh. Okay, three votes for Turner Diaries, alright. Um-
What's the, what's the other one?
One vote for Tar Baby.
One for Tar Baby, okay. Uh, it was Tar Baby, that's Toni Morrison, Turner Diaries, white person William-
I'll vote for Turner Diaries.
Turner Diaries. I'll vote for Turner Diaries.
Okay.
Right now.
Gus, uh, excuse me Gus, that, that was me, uh, Bruce in the uh, chatroom, so-
Oh, okay. Okay, I got it. Wanted to make sure she was heard, okay. Got it. Um-
What chatroom?
It's uh, it's on Talk Show. It's just a different call ID. The call ID is one two two six eight nine. One, one two two six eight nine.
Okay.
Um, yeah. It'll be, should be up tomorrow, white people permitting for the call-in, but uh, okay. So, I'll, it looks-
I just wanna just say about the Turner Diaries, that, that um, uh, that book has international implications for worldwide, um, uh, for global terrorism, racist terrorism. And uh, you know, victims who listen to the cows in um, other parts of the world will, I, I think um, will be able to relate also to uh, that information.
I would agree. I would agree. Anders Breivik, I mean, it's lots of folks. Golden Dawn in Greece, the uh, English Defense League. I think uh, white people worldwide uh, are kinda on a similar page uh, with sentiment that's in Turner Diary. And I think Turner Diary, is at least the version that I have, is narrated by the author. Uh, and he gives a little blurb at the beginning of it, talking about he wrote this book a while ago and changes and things that he's seen since it came out and why it is more prescient now than before. But I think the, the author actually does the narration for the audiobook version that I have, so if that means anything to anybody. Um, but yeah, we'll come to a conclusion about this hopefully by tomorrow and see which one we will be doing next. I think Turner Diaries is a little bit long. We might be on this for a while. Like I, I haven't uh, listened to it yet. I just downloaded it and thought it would be cool to, to share or read on my own at some point, but it is kinda long. I think we might be on Turner Diaries for uh, more than a month. Or I know we'll be doing this for more than a month. If we do this one, it'll probably ride into maybe even October. It's pretty, it's like eight CDs. It's pretty long. Anywho, um, I did want to uh, make sure I got in. I made time to watch Imitation of Life uh, this week because uh, I just thought it was significant, the fact that this book, it calls attention to Pacola's name and said, oh wow, your name sounds like Piola in Imitation of Life. And for me, I mean, that would be double highlight uh, when the book is called, called out the film, the character, the whole nine, uh, and saying, hey, your name sounds like such and such. I just thought it would be a benefit to see Imitation of Life. Whoa. Uh, I would definitely encourage anyone, check out Imitation of Life. Uh, I, it's been a while since I saw the nineteen thirty-four version. I've seen the nineteen fifty-nine version a couple times. That's the one that I watched this week. Or I guess you could get the book. Um, wow, wow, wow. I almost made some sound clips that would have, boop, you could've plopped them right in uh, to open up for Blue's Eye. I mean, whoa, I see a lot of similarities between Pacola and Piola. If you watched the nineteen fifty-five, fifty-nine version, her name is not Piola. They changed it to Sarah Jane, but it's the same story, same character. I don't know why they changed the name anyway. Um, she just, I mean, wow. The, I don't wanna go into Imitation of Life. All I can say is just that title is symbolic even of itself. Why would they name it Imitation of Life? Uh, when the main, the gist of the story is you have a non-white female who has a black parent. They don't ever disclose any information about the father. They just leave that as a question mark. But the offspring is able to pass as a white person. And so she does this repeatedly. Uh, that's her whole ambition is to be white and she just has some mu- oh, man, the scene that I was gonna clip, I think the black mother is reading a story to her daughter who can pass for white and her best friend who is a white person. She's reading them both a story. They're both, I'll say ten. Uh, she's reading them this story and the non-white child who can pass for white says, well, what color is God? And the other child says, yeah, what color is God? What color is God? And I'm just waiting to see the answer that's gonna come from this and I, I think one of the parents, they try to get around it to be like, oh, you know, God is not on blah, blah, blah. And uh, the children are just like, please. God is a white man. He's gotta be a white man. You see the picture? He's got blue eyes and white hair. God is a white man. And then you can just see the impact and how this goes into the brain computer. I mean, it is, it is fascinating and I can see the implications. This film was very, they made it twice. Very popular film. It was a book. I'm quite sure, and this was before you had eight thousand television channels. So, I mean, if you can imagine sixty years ago, this was probably a major film that a lot of black people saw, had a big impact. I'm quite sure Toni Morrison saw this film, read the book and it factored into her thinking about the character Pacola. I see so many similarities in this non-white child who can pass for white in Imitation of Life. I mean, it was like she would have clawed her mother's eyeballs out. If that means you can be on the white team, mom, you are about to get clawed to death. If that means I can be accepted as a white person and I could see the same thing happening with Pacola. It is, wow. I would just, if you wanna get any more information or if you wanna continue with this and get more insight into, you know, some of the factors that influenced it, I would say check out Imitation of Life, the book, the film, both. It's on YouTube. It's easily available. Probably got it at your library. Imitation of Life, wow. You'll uh, wow. Just leave it at that.
Gus, excuse me. Um, there's like a, a male version of that. I, I can't remember the name of it, but his parents are, are black, but he can pass for white. And he has, and it's, it's, it's something. I, I sent you um, a link to it um, in the email some time ago, but I cannot remember um, the name of it. And that, that film is, is really sad as well.
Is it The Human Stain?
Uh, I, I can't recall.
Anthony Hopkins?
No, it's, it's not Anthony. Anthony Hopkins isn't in it.
Oh, okay.
That was pretty close, I would say.
Yeah.
Nicole Kidman, Anthony Hopkins. Lot of similar uh, similar scenes in those two. Um, Human Stain is a newer version. Anywho, uh, that's, we're way over. We'll be back tomorrow. You all can think if you didn't get, if you're still thinking about which book that you would like to do next, you can think about it. Tune in tomorrow. We'll be back. Uh, same uh, time. You can tune in Black Talk Radio Network or you can listen, white people permitting. You can listen at Talk Show, one two two six eight nine, one two two six eight nine. You can use the same Earl, the tiny Earl, tiny dot C C forward slash R W S W J. It'll take you to the updated uh, cows page that works now. If you use the tiny dot C C forward slash R W S W J, it'll take you to the current page for uh, the program. And of course, the free HD line, same line, same number, all that, nothing changed. Anywho, we'll be back tomorrow. Thank you everybody for just tuning in. Uh, I would encourage folks, get Toni Morrison's book, uh, or get the audiobook and listen to it again on your own to really digest it. Uh, I've listened to it, read it more than six times at this point, six, seven times. I don't, I've kinda lost count. More than six times though. Um, and I learned something every time through. So, I would encourage, read it, check it out again. You will, you will benefit from it. I think Toni Morrison really gives some insight about the victimization and how black people are responding to racism, white supremacy. Uh, thank you all again. We'll be back tomorrow, nine PM Eastern, six PM Pacific. It has been time. Replace White Supremacy with Justice. You need, oh yeah, I wanted to make sure I got it. Alison Felix is super gorgeous. Woo, man, oh man. I didn't get to see Alison Felix. She's a black female. She won a gold medal in uh, the two hundred. I think she's doing the relay. Wowee, she is uh, super, super, super gorgeous. I didn't have, I don't have any negative comments about her hair, anything else. She is super gorgeous. She did happen to win a gold medal too, but that's kinda, I'm not gonna say irrelevant, but that was not the uh, number one thing. Wowee, gorgeous black female. We'll be back tomorrow.
I think the whole track team.
I'm sorry?
I think the whole track team, female track team, gorgeous.
Oh, I didn't see the whole team. If they all look like her, then I'd say, yeah, they're pretty gorgeous, but she's pretty fine. Uh, we'll be back tomorrow. Uh, Replace White Supremacy with Justice immediately. Cows signing out.